Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, October 28, 2021. Appreciate everybody being here. Just a couple announcements before we get started. If you have a cellphone, if you could turn that to silent, we'd appreciate it. It'll help us move things along. Another reminder, if you haven't signed up to speak, there are little sheets of paper out on the table out front. You can fill one of these out, hand it to our friendly staff people, and they will make sure and get it to me so I can call you at the appropriate time. If you didn't fill one of these out, you still want to be heard, I'll ask at various times throughout the hearing if anybody wants to be heard on an item, feel free to raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. I was reminded from staff that I've done a bad job of sharing with folks. We did an update to our bylaws this year, limit speakers' comments to five minutes. I'm going to be enforcing that today. In addition to the five minutes, just be sure that if something's already been said, we've heard the comment, or someone else has made it in advance of you. We don't need to hear it twice. I'll ask you if there's something else you want to add that's different from what we've been told, and that'd be your time to chime in. So, we appreciate everybody taking their afternoon to spend it with us. We'll get started. First item on the agenda today is the receipt of the minutes from the October 14, 2021 meeting. If there's no discussion from commissioners on those minutes, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, I'll take the second on Prime Gov. Motion and a second by Commissioner Hinkle to receive the minutes for the October 14 meeting. Please cast your votes. One, two, three, all votes should be cast, and those minutes are received. Next item on the agenda today are uncontested -- or, I'm sorry, yeah, our uncontested continuance requests. I think we have four of those.
We do. Item 23, SPOD 1217, asked to defer to November 18. Item 24, SPOD 1357, also to November 18. Item 25, Innovation District, deferred to November 18. And item 26, PC 10768, request to defer to December 9.
Is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on any of those items today? Items 23, 24, 25, and 26 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing nobody, I'll take a motion on those continuances as read.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the uncontested continuances as read.
Okay, I'll take the second on Prime Gov. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and those items are continued. Next item on the agenda today are new requests. I know we have two, we may have others. Mr. Butler, do you have those? Okay. My understanding from staff is that there was a desire to continue. Bear with me. Items 12 and 13, PUD 1848 and C 7363. Is the applicant present on those items?
Yes.
Okay, and am I correct that those have been requested to be continued to November the 18th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody who wanted to be heard on those items today? This is an audible continuance. PUD 1848, C 7363. Okay, seeing nobody, if there's no objection from Commissioner Coffey, since this is her ward, I'd take a motion to continue those two items.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the new continuances as read.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey to continue. Items 12 and 13 on today's agenda to November the 18th. Please cast your votes. All votes are cast, and those continuances are approved. Next item on the agenda is our consent docket. I believe we have seven items on today's consent agenda. We have two folks present to speak on item six. We also received a letter, so we will pull that item from the consent agenda. Mr. Butler, if you'd read the others for me.
Yes. Number one, KC 7357, final plat of Overholster Run, Section 1, located south of Northwest 23rd Street and east of Sarah Road. Item two, KC 7366, final plat of Satenta Grove 1, located north of Southeast 74th Street and west of South Anderson Road. Item three, KC 7367, final plat of Satenta Grove 2, located north of Southeast 74th Street and west of South Anderson Road. Item four is KC 7368, final plat of Dove Crossing, Section 1, located northwest 150th Street and west of North County Line Road. Item five, KC 10771, application to rezone 9989, southwest 44th Street, from AA to R1. And item seven, PC 10773, application to rezone 3516, Gould Avenue, from R1 to R2.
Is there anybody that wanted to be heard on one of those items today? And again, that's excluding item number six from the consent agenda. I know Mr. and Mrs. Lambert would like to be heard. Okay, if there's no discussion from commissioners on those items, I'll take a motion on those consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent docket as read, removing item six to be heard individually.
Okay, I'll take the second on Prime Gov. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. Again, approving all items on the consent docket except for item six. All votes should be cast, and those items are approved. Next item on our agenda today is items requiring separate vote, and we will start with item number six. Mr. Butler.
This is KC 10772, application to rezone 800 South Peabody Road, from AA to CHC Highway Commercial.
Is the applicant with us today? No, I was afraid of that. It's on consent. Commissioner Privet, this is in your ward. You want me to just go ahead and call the folks that have signed up to speak? Okay. Paula Lambert?
Actually, it's my ward, but I'm not there.
Okay, Ms. Lambert has deferred to Mr. Lambert. We'll hear it, we'll take your comments, Mr. Lambert. If you want to come up here to the microphone in the center and start out by giving us your name and address for the record, please.
I got some paperwork here for each one. My name's Bobby Lambert. I live just east of this proposed truck stop they're going to put in there, right off of I-40 and Peabody Road. Not only is my 30 acres--
What is that address, Mr. Lambert? I'm so sorry to interrupt you, I just want to make sure I get it for the record.
The address of the--
Of your address, sir.
Their address?
Yours.
Mine is 18600 Dawn Road.
Okay, thank you very much. Please continue.
Okay. Anyway, I own 30 acres in that vicinity, just east of this proposed truck stop, and there's numerous residential properties all around that area, up and down Posey Road, all along 89th Street. My -- what we have here is, right off Choctaw Road, just 10 miles, we have two truck stops. We have Love's off of Choctaw Road, and then on the other side, we have Pilot Truck Stop. 10 miles down the road, he's wanting to put one in right here at Peabody Road, which we've just now redid all the exits, stop signs, and we'd have to redo all that again for all the, you know, excess trucks coming in. And then, 1.2 miles down the road at McLeod Road is another Love's truck stop, and I'm sorry, another mile down the road at the Grand Casino is another truck stop. Was quite a few truck stops within that 10, 11-mile area. Not to mention, this has been agriculture area where he's wanting to put this in. Right across the street from my property is a cattle ranch with a pond. There's going to be a lot of hazardous materials. I worked on the hazmat, though, from City Fire Department. There will be fuel leaks, there will be hazardous material leaks, all into our agricultural My question is, why are we changing the rules here? This has always been agriculture. Why are we bringing the city right here in between four truck stops we already have? We're moving the goalposts back for this, what's going to be next? Seems to be the norm these days. I pay high taxes out there, around $6,000 a year in property taxes. Insurance going up. Not to mention, at this truck stop, there's going to be wrong turns, and they're going to be going down back south on 89th, and then they're going to be going back east to that new turnpike they put in there off of 89th. That road can't handle any more trucks. They haven't redone 89th, it's pitiful. The wear and tear on this road is going to be unbelievable. That's just going to be more taxpayers' money. I'm very concerned what happens around the truck stops. A lot of wandering around, a lot of crime, a lot of drugs, that's my concern also. We have a lot of residential areas out there, retirement homes like myself, that enjoy the country. And I just ask you guys here on the panel, take yourself off the panel for a minute, put yourself out there, put your loved ones out there, would you want a truck stop in your back door?
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. We appreciate you coming down today and sharing your comments with us. Thank you. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. I don't know if you have discussion. The applicant isn't present to sort of give us their take. I will say--
I think he showed up.
Oh, did he? Excellent. Please come forward. If you could give us your name and address for the record, that would be great.
I'm Najmi with NAFO Engineering, 4108 Northwest 143rd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. We did talk about this project to the city. We talked to the Planning Commission about the -- the Planning Department about it, and they were of the opinion that our first take should be a straight rezoning, because this is what best suits the site. And after discussing with them, we went forward with this process. They said the second option could be a PUD if we want to, NSPOD if we wanted to, but the first, JJ and Sarah with the Planning Department, told us that the first step in this process should be a CHC commercial rezoning for what we want to do, and this being an intersection site, the way it sits suits the project that we are trying to do there.
Got it.
So that was one of the reasons why we went ahead with what we wanted to do in the plans. And I did talk to Mr. Privet about it as well. I presented the project to him, and all of us thought that this was a straightforward rezoning suiting the site.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for--
No, like you said, you know, me and him talked, and, you know, being right on the highway, and it -- there's no better, I mean, place for a truck stop, so, yeah.
I agree. I mean, I just will also note for the record, I double-checked this other letter we received. So, we received a letter from Mike G., who's not here in opposition to the project as well. This property is not going to develop anything other than commercial at the proximity of the highway. The turnpike and the interchange redevelopment is precisely why the case is here. It's continuing to develop in that way. I can't see a reason not to support the application as it's presented from my seat. I don't know if anybody feels differently, but this would be the time to speak up. If there's not, and you feel comfortable about it, Commissioner Privet, take a motion when you're ready if there's no discussion with commissioners.
If no further discussion, I will move to approve case number 10772.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10772. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. Somebody, anybody, or am I -- oh, there we go. Commissioner Heisman's seconded the motion. Please cast your votes on a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10772. All votes should be cast, and that application is recommended for approval. Thank you very much for coming down, Mr. and Mrs. Lambert, thank you for joining us as well. Next item on our agenda today is item number eight. Mr. Butler?
This is KC 7369, preliminary plat of Manning Estates, located north of southwest 119th Street and west of South MacArthur Boulevard, the variance to Section 5.3.1, Point D, Point V of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who's also with me, as well as Chris Anderson, who's a civil engineer for this project. This is a preliminary plat on a parcel that came before Planning Commission on the rezoning not too long ago. You may recall it, I think it was probably just about six weeks ago. So, this is a preliminary plat that is in conformance with what we showed you at the time of the PUD. The reason that I am involved is due to some comments in the engineering section, specifically on paragraph eight of page six of your staff report. It says that the developer will be required to extend a gravity sanitary sewer collection system to each lot or site within the subdivision or land improvement in accordance with city standard specifications. So, prior to even filing the PUD, we actually went and met with the airport director at the time, Mr. Cranenberg, and he was supportive of the project as is with half acres, based upon the total density that came out on the site. He would not have been supportive if we extended sewer, because of the density that would have occurred there. In addition, the sewer line that runs through here is at capacity, or past capacity. So, the PUD that was recommended for approval by you, and ultimately approved by City Council on October 12 of this year, under Section 7.2 Sanitary Sewer, public sanitary sewer is not available to the subject site as such. Each lot shall be served via onsite private sanitary sewer solution. So, what I am requesting is we add a TE to just confirm that onsite private sanitary sewer solutions will be utilized within this plat. In terms of the technical evaluations, we agree to all of them. We do need the variance on TE2. As it relates to connection to the north, there is nowhere to connect. As it relates to connection to the east, it's a large creek with flood plain and flood way. And to the west, it's undeveloped, but more importantly, we have a private gated neighborhood, so it wouldn't make sense to connect. In the past, the commission's been willing, with private neighborhoods, to not require that connection. It wouldn't make much sense to be able to sell this as a private gated neighborhood when, of course, it had interconnectivity. So, we agree with all the TEs, we need a variance on two, and I would ask that we add a TE, which would be TE7, just to state that the plat shall be entitled to sanitary sewer solutions in accordance with the approved PUD.
I think I got some of that language for us to discuss. This is Commissioner Coffey's ward. Commissioner Coffey, do you have questions or comments for the applicant on this one?
No, I believe the request for the variance under TE2 is appropriate, and I agree with the TE as requested as number seven.
Would be TE -- we'd be adding TE8.
Yes.
Yeah, and just to clarify that for both you and the rest of the -- Commissioner Coffey, so, Mr. Box, the TE language that I jotted down very quickly as you were speaking was onsite private sewer system shall be permitted as outlined in the PUD?
Yes, sir. PUD 1836.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody who wanted to be heard on C 7369? Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, my name is Crystal Quillak. I'm the engineering manager for the Utilities Department. We have recommended the extension of the sewer lines in this area, because they are within a half a mile of sanitary sewer. We understand the sizing difficulties, but that's when we usually request the developer to participate, and we would also help self-fund with a B1 policy, but that the sanitary sewer needs to be extended as part of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, appreciate your comments on that, and I shouldn't ask you to speak on this, but I'm curious, is it, in your opinion, is it common practice for the airport not to support sanitary sewer lines in places like this that surround it because of the density problem it creates?
I'm not familiar with that recommendation at all, but I could definitely have a conversation with the new director.
Yeah, just curious.
And I'd add, like, we hashed this out at length, you will recall, that was the day in which we had 60-something items, and there were a host of items in which we had half-acre lots with private sanitary sewer solutions. It was discussed at nauseam.
Yep.
That was the time in which the decision should be made, not now with the preliminary plat, we're ready to turn dirt.
Yep, I don't disagree with you, I don't know how the commissioners feel, I don't disagree with you, so, but I'm curious to see if there's somebody else who has comments on this. I don't know anybody who wants to be heard, so it's essentially to the commission for discussion if anybody has any thoughts that are different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Powers?
You know, I'm concerned that there is some confusion here between what the applicant believes has been agreed to and what the staff is comfortable with. And I want to be very clear about what the staff believes ought to happen here before we vote on this. If, as Mr. Box believes, this is fine with whoever's ultimately responsible for that decision, then it's fine with me, too. If it's not fine with whoever it is that's ultimately responsible for that decision, the fact that it should have been decided before now doesn't really weigh on me.
Well, I think the argument that we did decide it when we approved the PUD, there's some weight to that, and in that we -- in very -- I don't recall from that meeting, because we had 60-something items, blacked out at 34, I think, that there were discussions at length about this. We know that the half-acre lot served by septic is a problem. I have personally voiced that concern to council people, the mayor's office. My understanding from folks is that we are working on an ordinance solution for that, and I'm very eager to see that come through. I'd be hopeful it would come through before the code update, but it may not. But I think in this case, given that it was zoned as half-acre lots, and that it's coming forward now, and there's a comment placed in it, I feel the same about this as I do instances where we include fire suppression language or something else which, you know, deviates from the ordinance, in this case, the PUD. I just, I understand what you're saying, but it's--
To me, this is a little different, though, than the fire suppression issue. I mean, you're talking about laying infrastructure that will serve a larger area, that will facilitate more dense development at some point, or not, and so it's setting a pattern for not just this piece of property, but for an area, and I think that's significant. I think it's important that we get this right. I'm sorry about the issue for your client, and I can certainly understand that there must be some frustration involved in that, but I don't think that we should wing it.
Yeah.
So, I would say we're not winging it, because again, the--
No, no, I don't mean you.
But the ordinance says, "Public sanitary sewer is not available to the subject site. As such, each lot shall be served via onsite private sanitary sewer solution."
And when you say the ordinance, you're reading from the PUD?
Yes.
Yeah, which was approved by City Council.
Approved by ordinance. So, the ordinance governing this property says--
Yeah, that's--
No public sewer.
Other comments from commissioners on this? If not, Commissioner Coffey, I think we're ready for a-- If not, Commissioner Coffey, I think we're ready for a motion. And we need a motion on the variance first, if you'd like to make it.
As it relates to C 7367, I recommend that we approve variance number two.
Okay. So, I have a motion to approve the variance to section 5.3.1D5 of the subdivision regulations?
And it's item C?
And items, yeah, on item C 7369. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your vote on the variance. Need six votes on the variance to approve it. All votes should be cast. And that variance is approved. I need a motion on the item, Commissioner Coffey.
Adding the TE.
Adding TE eight. And just for point of the record, TE eight's language agreed by the applicant was that onsite private sewer systems shall be permitted as outlined in PUD 1836.
I further recommend approval of C 7369, including technical evaluations one, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, as restated by Chairman Cravens.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat to C 7369, subject to the technical evaluations as amended. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is approved.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number nine. Mr. Butler?
This is item V 27, application requesting variances to sections 5.3.1, point D, point eight, and 5.4, point two, point E, point five of the subdivision regulations for the final plat of Willow Villas, located south of northwest 10th Street and east of North Cemetery Road.
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is a clean, this is a final plat that was approved prior, and a cleanup issue of not being able to address off cemetery due to not sufficient addresses, even number addresses between the property to the north and this property, and so, this would allow us to name the private drives, and therefore, we would, staff recommends approval, and they're actually the ones that called us and told us we needed to file this, so we would ask for your approval.
Understood. If you're asked to file for a variance, you ought to do it. Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward. Do you have any comments on this?
No. This is primarily an administrative issue, and I would recommend approval of this application, V 27.
Okay. Real quickly, is there anybody who wants to be heard on this, just to be safe? This is item number nine on today's agenda, V 27. Okay. Seeing nobody, we need two separate motions, Commissioner Coffey, one for each of the variances, and then, I think, for the item two, right? On these, yeah. So, we need three total motions. You can start whichever one of these variances and sections you'd like to.
I recommend variance number one.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the variance to section 5.3.1D8 of the subdivision regulations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Heismith. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that variance is approved.
I recommend approval of variance 5.3.1, point D, point eight.
Okay. That's the, that is the variance we just approved. This would be for section...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. 5.4, point two, point E, five.
Five.
Yep. So, I have a motion to approve that variance? Is that correct? Commissioner Coffey?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that variance is approved. And then, Belt and Suspenders, let's just take a motion on the item V 27.
I approve, I make the motion to approve V 27.
Okay. I have a motion to approve V 27. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Heismith. Please cast your votes. And that item is approved. Next item on the agenda today is item number 10.
This item is case number PUD 1852, application to rezone 5300 South Richland Road from AA to PUD 1852.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Tolan Associates, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant. So, according to PUD for an eight-acre tract, it's basically, this PUD is to allow us to develop this into three, two-and-a-half acre residences on the property for the family. PUD is consistent with the rural medium Luda. Staff's recommended approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. This is Commissioner Coffey, you're popular today. This is your ward, ma'am. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant on this?
No, I do not. I have not received comments from the public in this regard.
Okay. I have not, I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wants to be heard on PUD 1852 today? If there's, there's nobody, if there's no discussion from commissioners on this one, if you'd like to make a motion, Commissioner Coffey, I think we're ready.
I recommend approval of PUD 1852, subject to the seventeen-foot additional easement as recommended.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PUD 1852. Please cast your, it's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast.
Thank you.
Thank you. That item is approved, or recommended therefore. Next item on the agenda is item number 11. Mr. Butler?
This is case number SP 554, application to operate an automotive dealership use in C 3, located at 7400 South Centipede Avenue.
Good afternoon. My name is Berkey here. I'm the representative for the applicant. My address is 215 Johnston Street, Rock Hill, South Carolina, 29730.
Welcome to Oklahoma, sir.
Thank you. So, Group One Automotive is in the process of purchasing this property, and they would like to build what will be Bob Howard Hyundai here. And the property's been compiled from several lots, and it's got multiple zonings. There's an I-2 zoning up in the front, and then, I think it's C-2 in the back, and we need a special use permit to allow automobile sales for the C-2 portion.
Got it. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. I do not have anybody signed up to speak. You have questions or comments on this one?
Nope. Dealership across the street from the dealership.
Okay.
That's kind of what I thought. And of course, the applicant's in agreement they're going to pay sales tax on all the auto sales, even though it's not owed, right? Okay, good job. You got that on the record?
I did.
Any discussion from commissioners on this one? If not, I think we can take a motion on the item from you, Commissioner Privet.
I'll move to approve PUD 1852.
This is SP 554.
D, one of my own, wrong screen.
It's all right.
SP 554, yes.
I have a motion to recommend approval on SP 554. It's been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And that item is recommended for approval. Thank you. Be sure, I need a local restaurant while you're here. There's some great ones.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yep. Item 12 and 13 have been continued to November the 18th, which brings us to item 14. Mr. Butler?
This is case PUD 1850, application to rezone 11100 Southwest 15th Street from AA to PUD 1850.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that frankly is created by the new turnpike. You have these, these pieces of land that otherwise wouldn't have existed. This piece happens to rest along Southwest 15th, which, based upon recent PUDs that have come through here, you know is a major commercial area that will be and is currently developing. And then, there's a lot of single-family home development to the east. So, we've broken this into two tracks, a track to the north that will be a base of C 3, modified to the uses included in the PUD, and then, track two, which is to the south, will be R 1. It provides connectivity options both east and south. R 1, pre-standard development that is compatible with the existing single-family homes that exist to our east and to our southeast. So, there are no TEs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward, ma'am. Do you have questions or comments for the applicant on this?
No, I don't. Interestingly, I have not received questions or comments. This is an unusual tract of property. I do not have questions or concerns.
Okay. Is there anybody here that wanted to be heard on PUD 1850 today? Seeing nobody, if there is no discussion from commissioners, I don't have any comments on this. If nobody else does, Commissioner Coffey, if you're comfortable, we'll take the motion.
I recommend approval of PUD 1850.
Okay. I have a motion. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Heismith. Please cast your votes on recommending PUD 1850 for approval to City Council. All votes should be cast. Call them out, it's okay. And that item is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Get them, Paula. Get them. Call their name out. Item 15, Mr. Butler?
Item 15 is case PUD 1853, application to rezone 4701 South Anderson Road from AA to PUD 1853.
Hello?
Hi.
Philip Lewis, Philip Lewis Engineering, from Bryant, Arkansas, 23620 Interstate 30.
Welcome to Oklahoma.
Thank you. This is a, in a request for an addition to an existing RV dealership for a ten-acre additional inventory lot to the north, due to another format of a PUD, and I believe it's fairly straightforward. There are some items that were brought up that I believe we probably need to discuss today, primarily the setback to the north of the property, as well as the western end of the property. So, the north end, we've shown the 25-foot setback, and the request from staff was to possibly increase that, excuse me. Our, I'm representing the ownership group, and their desire would be to not increase that, because obviously, their whole idea is maximum amount of inventory. It's why they're doing this. They're willing to do additional landscaping to whatever level's required along the north side. The parking lot will have to be taken down somewhat in grade in order to facilitate the maximum amount of slope they like to have on their parking lots, and that's one item. And they had asked about possibly reducing the setback to the south against the adjacent, existing dealership. The way we have it laid out, we really need to utilize that space for maneuverability. As you can see, that first row of parking's still going to have to be angled in order to get the units in there. And anyway, that's everything pertaining to the north. I don't know if you all want to discuss that before we discuss the west end, or you want...
Go ahead and, go ahead and tell us your comments on the west, so we can address them.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I was going to say, I just had a question. I mean, or did you read the technical evaluations? Because, because they...
Take 25 off the south.
They basically say increase to 50 on the north, but you take that 25 and take it out of the south, so you're, you're looking at a zero setback on the south side.
And no change to your actual...
So, there's no decrease to the, to the inventory area?
But we'd be shifted, what I, that's what I was saying, that how we have the south end laid out for maneuverability, that's what I was getting at. You can see the 25-foot setback line. We still having to use angled parking in order to make that work to be effective there.
Your mic's off, Commissioner Privet.
Okay. You're going to have more space there with a zero lot line, though.
Just scoot it all the way over. Take that little bit of space. Okay. Well, an additional, so if you take an additional 25 feet...
It wouldn't be additional. It'd be taking 25 foot from, from the north to the, or from the south to the north.
Agreed, but...
To give the residential more of a buffer than the adjacent RV dealership.
I think the way he's showing it, he's already eliminated, he's showing it already that way.
That's what I was getting at. We've had to use that for maneuverability. I mean, that's what I'm saying, that first row of parking's angled.
This plan that he has provided already assumes they would provide a zero-foot setback on the south side next to their other property, correct?
Okay. The one I'm looking at shows 25, so...
Well, he's got a, it says, it says a building setback on there, but...
Which would have been off of the north property line of the existing dealership, which that'll go away with the PUD, because obviously, we can adjust the setbacks accordingly.
But it's clearly, like, there's paving, there's parking. I mean, they've developed within that area, or they're proposing it, as far as my read.
That was my, and I'm not, not to be argumentative, that was my point, because we need that for maneuverability, I mean, for the units, and so, and like I said...
I guess.
So, Mr. Lewis, it's your position that you, there's nothing you can do, just to kind of move this, there's nothing you can do to accommodate the 50-foot setback request on the north side? Is that your position?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Are there other things that we could do mitigation-wise, which Mr. Lewis has offered up to address the concerns with that closeness to the property to the north, from your perspective, Commissioner Privet? Anything there that would satisfy you?
I've, it's going to be sight-proof fencing, right, required?
Yes, sir. And that's included in the privacy fence.
Even...
I'm sure if we had to make that taller, we would, and...
It's not going to help. I mean, even if it's an eight-foot or 10-foot fence, RV's still going to be taller than the fence.
RVs are pretty tall.
Yep.
But our, and our, just to note, our lot will be coming down in grade as well, so there'll be...
What is that grade difference? Do you know?
I don't know specifically.
It's a decent grade on that side of the highway.
Well, I think, I apologize for jumping in. I thought I heard you, early on, potentially volunteering to install heightened landscape.
Yes.
And so, I would think, particularly for me, especially trees with a, with a maturity growth, you know, that reaches, I don't know, any standard tree, I think you're going to be above an RV at that point, so, that'd at least be my recommendation, that we turn to our landscape expert on a, on center for the tree placement, and a, and a good species, and...
Sure.
One thing that appeases me, given that this is a, the nature of the application is, it does specify in the parking regulations, just to point out to commissioners, that they're going to use asphalt, so it's not a gravel lot that's super-close to the north boundary, like they're going to create dust, and it's going to, you know, travel over or whatever. So, they're specing asphalt.
I have some questions. How long has the applicant owned the land, or do you own the land that you're asking?
It's under contract. They have permission from the existing to read.
And who owns the land immediately to the north of what you're purchasing? Is it the same seller?
Honestly, I don't believe so, but I'm not certain. I apologize for not knowing that. I know the name is on there, but I don't...
So, my hesitation here is, if it was the same owner, then they could manage that by what they're selling, and if they, they can manage it a little more. If it's a different owner there, if the setback is supposed to be 25 feet, you diagram your lot accordingly. It's not like we end up in a really bad situation, and this could not have been predicted, and there's nothing that the applicant can do about it now, other than we have to eliminate the normal 25-foot setback. It's draw it differently and fit, or buy more land, so that, you know, buy an extra 25 feet. So, I'm not sure...
We're not eliminating the normal 25-foot setback. We're staying within the normal 25-foot setbacks. They're asking for an additional...
Staff's requesting 50 because of the adjacency.
Because of the height of the RVs or something?
Because of the adjacency to the land of the north being zoned separately.
Thank you for the clarification, though. So, I missed that. The staff is wanting more than the normal.
Correct. We are meeting the 25. They've asked for 50. We're just saying, and they're, they were presuming that we possibly could take the 25 from the south. We can't.
Right. Okay. That helps that, so why does the staff want more than the normal? Why does it need to be 50-foot, the height of RVs or something? Because it's not like people are living in the RVs, they're just parked there.
It's just adjacent to residential.
I believe the adjacency to residential.
To me, a lot of times, especially in these situations, I think it's fun that we, To me, a lot of times, especially in these situations, I think it's fun that we, or funny, maybe not fun, that we have all these compatibility measures for R1, but they don't really trigger the same way for, you know, agricultural, where a lot of people still live. So, technically, I mean, it's like, if we viewed that as R1 next door, I think we'd be having a different conversation, but, I mean, there's homes there, so.
I think it's appropriate, given that the land is being used. I think you look at how the land is being used in addition to how it's zoned to decide which compatibility tools you implement or utilize to try to help. We, you know, we don't know how that area is gonna develop. If you're agreeing to landscaping, we do it all the time. I don't know why we would do it or feel differently about it here. My thought is we do, you know, 25-foot center separated trees like we do, and they've got sight-proof screening, which isn't gonna matter. And if we're not comfortable with that, then we tell the applicant that he's gotta meet the setback. I don't know which way we want to go, but somebody tell me.
I'm good with 25-foot and trees.
Okay. And Commissioner Claire, do you want to give us some language that, because this is, sorry to point to you, but you're our expert.
Just say, within the 25-foot buffer along the north buffer, canopy trees per Oklahoma City's Trees and Plants Recommended List be provided on 25-foot centers for the length of the north boundary line.
Is that agreeable to the applicant, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay.
We'll work with the staff to meet what, you know, their desire. The owners certainly willing, or seem to be owners, to do that.
Okay. And then we have the other issue of the TE1, which is, states that no buildings or hard surface parking shall be permitted within the western 100 feet of the site. You also take issue with that in technical evaluation. Is that correct?
Would like to visit about that, yes, sir.
Okay.
As I've read and under, much as I understand it, it has something to do with the forestry, attempt to keep the forestry continuation through there. Forgive me if I misspeaking on that. We've shown that to be a designated detention area, no paving, parking, et cetera. Obviously, in order to, and I, we haven't gotten to that point as far as working through the engineering division or whatever it is that governs the detention here. The specific requirements, but obviously, usually, there would be some birmingham involved around that perimeter. It wouldn't be a retention, just a detention, the release. And it would, we're showing it in that 100-foot area, but we don't desire to cut everything down and put parking lot down there. So, just wanted to open that discussion up to see...
I've seen staff, and he's right, that we're requiring 100 feet because of the riparian area, the pond and maybe a creek.
Yeah, just preserve the natural area.
Upland Forest is saying, identifies an upland forest on the western third of the side, which looks like down that western 100 foot where it's still somewhat wooded, or there's trees and...
You're showing it, though, as an area where you believe detention's gonna be required from an engineering perspective.
Yes, and naturally, that's our direction of our slopes. That would be the natural place, yes, sir, to put it, so I...
Understood. The trees knew that, too. That's why they grew there. Commissioner Privet, comments on that or concerns?
You know, I'd much rather have detention, I think. I mean, you've gotta have something. Or it's gonna overfill that pond and...
I'd like to see, if we're sticking with the 25 feet, I'd like to see an undisturbed area along the boundary line, a little west boundary line, preserved and undisturbed. And so, your detention area...
Yes, sir.
Retention area would sit to the east of that, and you'd be able to preserve at least 25-foot of vegetation.
25 along the west boundary, yes, sir, if that...
So, you're, but I want to be clear about what you're saying. You're saying 25 feet of preservation and then the detention has to go east of that. So, you want to preserve 25 feet of the trees. We would amend TE1 to 25 feet. Okay?
And to me, that's reasonable request. You will lose a little bit, right, but it's much less coming from that.
Right. We can't have, they can't have everything. And it's Camping World, which, you know, they're nationwide. I mean, we're doing these all over the country, but they're, we have to make concessions across the country.
And you're agreeable to TE3 also, right, so we can, you know, save as many trees as possible?
Oh, yes, absolutely. No. And I don't know if, you're very familiar with their product. They're very particular. The gentleman that owns the whole thing, hands-on. We work for the person right underneath him, and they keep a very pristine site, and so they're very particular.
Okay. So, here's where we are.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone else signed up to speak on this matter?
I do not have anybody signed up to speak. I lied. Nope, I don't. I have Mr. Lewis, that's it.
Okay. Well, I'm frankly astonished that the person who lives to the north of this property isn't here today, but... I don't feel like our only job here is to help people maximize the value of their property. I don't think 50-foot setback along the north is too much to ask. Certainly not to some depth that is abutting an existing residential use. I mean, the house on the north side of this property is right there. And as far as preserving the upland forest area or the existing tree cover along the west side of the property line, it seems to me they've done that on the south half of their property. I don't see why it's such a problem here.
Okay. Appreciate that comment, I do. Other commissioners have thoughts?
I'll say one thing, because Janice, I was thinking of some of what you were saying, too, but I got, I looked at the satellite and a neighbor to the north put their house right next to the boundary, so... They have more property going north, too, and if they, they wanted to be right next to the boundary as well, so. Either way.
Well, the boundary could have been different.
There was a house on this property, so...
Is that, do we know if that, not, it really matters, but is the house occupied? The one closest to the property?
No idea.
It doesn't say vacant.
The only way we would know that is if they were here. Yeah. I'm sensitive to Commissioner Powers' comments. I mean, I don't think we have any obligation to just give an applicant, you know, the free rein of their design. It's always amazing, we have a case today, you know, later on, that, you know, people go back and they work it out and they figure out a solution to it. So, I'm, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, because the 25 feet is something that we've used regularly and, you know, but I take the comment to heart, because I agree with you that we don't have any obligation to try to help them, you know, maximize it to the detriment of everything else. So, if you have strong feelings about it, this is the time to speak up and evidence it. Otherwise, I think we're ready to try to move forward here. Commissioner Claire?
I mean, as a compromise, I mean, staff asked for 100, so we cut that in half, 50?
Is the applicant agreeable to 50 feet on the west boundary? I think you can figure it out, I'll bet you.
The west boundary? Yeah, you can get that.
You can figure that out, I promise.
Yeah, I just, yes.
Yeah. Okay, we'll make that 50 feet.
One last comment for me. To me, I think one of the ways that I at least think we should be thinking about this one, I mean, we didn't have any problem, and I know it was, you know, every item's unique, but the truck stop earlier at a very similar location type, and there was no concern over the compatibility issues that we briefed.
Well, it was a straight zoning issue.
For sure, for sure.
And there's really nothing around it except for farmland. I think Commissioner Powers' concern is that while we have AA to the north, it's actually a residential use. So, trying to protect them, we do it all the time with other issues, you know, that are backing up to residential. So, I think there's some differences.
I guess I was thinking, we were talking about, like, what might be the future use of, like, is, if it was to develop further as residential? But if that's not the case, then I'm missing it.
Is it, is it appropriate to ask, because I don't know that that's completely forested on that, you know, even the 50 feet. I'd have to go out there and check. It may well be.
It sure looks forested from the aerial.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I think, I mean, again, I think that's why staff included the comment. They reviewed it.
I see, yes, I'm sorry. I've seen that. I apologize. We've got about 20 of these going across the country, so. Not that Oklahoma City is not important and loves trees.
It's very important. Eat at a local restaurant while you're here. Visit the memorial while you're here. Great museums. Go see the zoo.
I had two friends from engineering school.
TE1, we've amended to 50 feet. You're agreeable to that? TE2, we've changed this, we've, we're leaving the setback at 25 feet, but the applicant's in agreement with the landscaping language proposed by Commissioner Claire. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And TE3, we're leaving unchanged. Is that correct? Commissioner Privet, I think we are ready for a motion, sir.
Okay.
Let it not be said that we did not debate trees in this hall.
Move to approve PUD 1853, subject to TE1, amending it to 50 feet to 100. TE2 at 25 feet, plus canopy trees, 25 foot on center, and TE number three, preserving trees.
Excellent. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1853, subject to the technical evaluations amended as read by Commissioner Privet. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. Column, Paula. Commissioner Hinkle. All votes have been cast and the application is recommended for approval. Next item on the agenda is item 16.
I'm gonna step out briefly.
Yep. You're not recusing, correct? Okay.
16 is case number PUD 1854, application to rezone 4,000 East Hefner Road from PUD 1586 to PUD 1854.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is QuickTrip. Also with me is Craig Honeywell with QuickTrip. This is a PUD located at I-35 and East Hefner Road. The PUD is a single-use PUD to allow for the first QuickTrip in our market. So, what I've handed out are a series of exhibits to show you the site plan and to show you the signage that we seek. As everyone knows, I-35, Hefner Road, it's a, it's an area that is heavily traveled, lots of industrial-type development. The ability to have a truck stop on I-35, we believe to be a valuable asset to the city, one that'll be used and one that, to your concern, will generate lots of sales tax for people, so.
We like sales tax.
That's right. So, attachment number one is the site plan. It also shows the layout of the various signage on site. And then, as you scroll through, exhibit two is an elevation of the building with the proposed attached signage. Three is a elevation of our proposed highway sign. And then finally, four is a series of the other site signs that will exist around the site that you can reference back to the site plan. So, again, it's a very limited PUD in that it's a single-use PUD, limited to the truck stop. It's very detail-oriented in that all of the signage regulations refer to the specific elevations contained within the PUD in terms of size. So, the scale, the height, the size, all of that is very detailed and provided in the PUD. There are no technical evaluations. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we are asking for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. This case is in Commissioner Pennington's ward, and he is not with us today. Do other commissioners have questions or comments for the applicant?
Did the sign change?
The sign didn't change. It's still 313 square feet is what we have asked for.
And the question you're alluding to, Mr. Privet, is related to the Board of Adjustments' recommendation. It's obviously a non-binding recommendation to planning commission to limit the signage to 275 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, Commissioner Privet is our planning commissioner who also serves on the Board of Adjustment. Other questions or comments from commissioners for the applicant on this? I do have someone signed up to speak. I think maybe, no. No, I'm sorry. It looked like a 16, but it's an 18, so I don't have anybody on this one. No questions? If there's no questions, I'll take a motion from somebody.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of PUD 1854.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1854. There are no technical, okay, yep, that's it. Seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that application is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. QuickTrip, welcome to Oklahoma City. Item 17.
This is case CE 1057, application to close a one-mile north-south portion of Douglas Boulevard between Southeast 74th Street and Southeast 44th Street. A 1,590-foot east-west portion of the Southeast 49th Street between South Douglas Boulevard and Oakwood Lane, and a 3,997-foot east-west portion of Southeast 59th Street between South Douglas Boulevard and Berryman Road.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This application requests a wonderful opportunity for the city to further protect, enhance, and expand Tinker Air Force Base. As everybody knows, Tinker is a major economic engine for not only the city, but, you know, this portion of the state. This application will allow for that future expansion, security, and all of the things that Tinker is doing and will continue to do in the future. By closing the streets, it will allow for secure locations to enter Tinker as well as secure locations to expand within the area on the other side of Douglas. So, there is one TE. We do agree to it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. Commissioner Privet, this is your ward. Do you have questions on the applicant or questions for the applicant on this application?
I do not. If anybody's here to speak, though, I'd like to hear.
Okay. I do have one person who signed up to speak, which is Bill Martin. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, yes. My name is Bill Martin, 2,700 Northwest 21st, here in Oklahoma City. I just, I'm in support of it. Just want to express my thoughts. I'm the senior manager for a company called Kellogg Brown and Root, KBR, and I've been with them for 29 years. I will say I'm not here on behalf of my company. I'm here as a private citizen, so I'm speaking for myself and not the company that I work for. I do have deep roots in Oklahoma, born here, raised here, nearly 60 years. I do have strong connections with Tinker Air Force Base and the United States Air Force. 12 years active duty, 18 years as a reservist.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. And for 29 years, I've worked for Kellogg Brown and Root, defense contractor that supports Tinker Air Force Base and its various missions. I'm here representing also the 110 roughly employees that work for KBR. And we have a pretty good mix of employees, engineers, program managers, technical writers, systems analysts, an average salary of about $86,000. And one of the reasons we're in support of this, as Tinker Air Force Base grows, it provides additional opportunities for companies like mine as well as our employees for advancement and growth. So, we are, we are in support of the expansion, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We appreciate you coming down. I don't have anybody else signed up. Is there anybody that would like to be heard on this item?
I have a dumb, maybe a dumb question, probably a dumb question.
There's no such thing. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think there are. But this, how come we never run into the same compatibility questions at Tinker that we do at the commercial air force or airport?
Meaning what?
I know we keep like a certain amount of space around our airport, you know, Will Rogers over there. There's a lot of...
They're the same.
It's just very well protected.
This seems like so, this seems, this is next door. We got housing here. I mean, like, this just seems to be like a very different condition, or am I just thinking about this wrong?
There are, there are the same airport environment zones, well, not the same, but we have both AE1 and AE2 at Tinker as well. And which is why we, you know, we try to avoid residential uses and within that area, and I don't, you know, we don't have that on the map here. But we do have the same considerations for uses in the environments of Tinker.
And then, and to be fair, too, knowing history in the past, there have been issues where residential has gotten close and it's caused problems. And we've had to deal with those issues over time, so.
Yeah, 29th.
Just curious.
I think they destroyed two or three blocks of houses because of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Box?
Yes?
Can I ask you, do we have any idea what use is going to be made of this land?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any idea what use is going to be made of this surrounding property? Does Tinker already own it?
Either Tinker or affiliated authorities own it and control it.
Okay.
So, yes.
So, it'll be put to Tinker kind of uses?
Yes, it will be all uses that are to support Tinker and the United States Air Force.
Any other comments? I'll just say this to Mr. Martin's comments. Tinker Air Force Base is the most important installation, both privately and publicly, that we have in our community. If they called on people to bring shovels and jackhammers to help make this process more quickly, I'd be there tomorrow. So, I couldn't emphatically support the application more. I think it's critically important. Douglas seems like a small price to pay for what we're getting as a community as it relates to Tinker. So, if there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I use it every day, but, you know, whatever.
Yeah, well, drive around.
Yeah, well, city council's gonna have to fix 74th Street for me.
You can put that motion into city council for now. Let's build the base.
The only feedback I got from a resident was about the cemetery on 59th, and I asked about it, and it will not change. They will still have access to it. Just probably be through a military gate, so. That's the only thing I got.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, and I'll move to approve PUD 1854.
CE 1057.
Looking at that screen. CE 0.
1-0.
1-057. It's right there.
I have a motion to approve or recommend approval to city council on CE 1057. It's been seconded by a couple people, apparently. Please cast your votes.
Mary made it.
It's all right. All votes have been, all votes should be cast. And that application is unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is item 18. Mr. Butler?
This is SP 550, application to operate a heavy public protection and utility use in the I-2 moderate industrial district with AE1 Airport Environment Zone overlay located at 11-501 South, I-44 Service Road.
I'm Mr. Chair, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I understand you're gonna limit us to a five-minute stretch, so I'm gonna, if I may, have this exhibit book handed out before my five minutes starts.
Oh, your five minutes started when you opened your mouth.
No.
That five-minute rule is actually the box rule. I don't know if you knew that.
I thought it was the Eric Groves rule. So, if I may, I'm gonna let these be handed out, and then I will start. I'm even gonna use my phone just to make sure I stay in under your five-minute rule.
You're the new parliamentarian, Commissioner LaForge.
Thank you, Mr. LaForge. Okay. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. The applicants, the Ferguson's, are also here with me, as well as Wade Miller, who's a civil engineer for the project, and also... a civil engineer for the project, and also Keith Gibson in my office. Cindy, if you could play the video. There's no sound for this video, so in the interest of making my five minutes worthwhile, I'm gonna play the video and talk. The video you're seeing is a video of a transfer facility in the city of Norman. The reason I'm showing you this video is because it reflects what it is my client will build on this property in terms of size and what the use is. What we seek today is a special permit. It is zoned I-2. All of the surrounding area are industrial-type uses to that point to the north. There is a fiberglass manufacturing facility. There is a paint manufacturing facility, and there is a marijuana grow facility. This is a facility that all the operations are handled inside. Material is brought. That big truck on the left pushes it up against that wall to compress it, and ultimately, what we're gonna see here in just a few moments is that chute where a truck is pulled inside the facility. The material after compressed is loaded into the truck. The truck is covered, and then that truck goes to the landfill. So what a transfer station operates as is an intermediary process between the end user and the far, the end user being the landfill and the generator of the trash. What you can expect to see is think of a dumpster at an office complex, a commercial park. It is open to the public, so those people who have projects at home or are cleaning their garage out and may have a bit of time before the next big trash day, rather than go to the landfill because of the impediments that you or I may believe exist with going to the landfill, this is a facility that's clean, it's all indoors, and it's a much more inviting environment to bring your trash to. So briefly, if we can look at the exhibits, Exhibit 1 I want to highlight. So Exhibit 1 shows our facility outlined in red, and it's showing the Williamson Farms residential neighborhood to the south and west, and it's got a marker on there that says one mile. So the Williamson Farms neighborhood, who I know have sent in some emails, are a mile away from this. I think that's important because you no doubt remember Williamson Farms being here recently to oppose a operation for mining on their southern border. Of course, that was their southern border. It touched their southern border. We're a mile away. Not only are we a mile away, but we're a mile away along Interstate 44 at a full interchange of Southwest 119th Street. Why that's important is because this is an industrialized area that, under the conference of plan, designates the site as heavy industrial. What that's defined as is the designation simultaneously concentrates heavy users away from existing or future neighborhoods while preserving prime land that has attributes critical to industrial business such as proximity to highway. So, you know, the point has been made that if we believe that these are valuable assets to cities, and we believe they are, we met with the airport director. He was supportive. He's now retired. We met with the interim director. He indicated the same level of support, Mr. Krannenberg. We met with the former parks director, who was supportive. There's a new parks director, the interim director. We met with her. She is likewise supportive. The reason that they are supportive is because they believe these facilities allow for the opportunity to reduce illegal dumping. So if not here, where? If not here in a heavy industrial designation along an interstate, then perhaps there's nowhere these could be. Well, that can't be the answer, because these are valuable assets to communities. So if we flip to Exhibit 2, you'll see the next exhibit that shows proximity to the residential and the park. The South Lakes Park is approximately a half mile away, and it's to the south and the west. And of course, to get to that park, you'd have to travel through the industrial development, multiple ponds, and then, of course, a major arterial, which is Southwest 119th Street. Exhibit 3 shows our site plan. We have over 700 feet of queuing from the service road to get to the facility. One of the questions that have been brought up is blowing trash. So it's important to know that the facility itself will be enclosed with a fence, and then there will be another fence around the broader property. Secondly, this is a matter that is through a special permit, so we're able to put restrictions upon ourselves. So we have our operational hours Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00, and Sunday, 11:00 to 5:00. There is a requirement that every bit of material that's brought into the facility be processed and out the door within 24 hours. So the idea that a smell could be created, we believe to be inaccurate. Additionally, although it's not required, we have self-imposed upon ourselves the requirement to wash the floors at the end of each day. It is an enclosed facility, so at the end of each day, the doors will be closed. We believe that based upon the proximity of the highway, the heavy industrial designation, all of the things that are gonna happen here are well within what you would expect to see, and frankly, least, less impactful than what could be done under I-2 zoning. That was 4 minutes and 55 seconds.
You are exactly right.
There are three TEs, all of which we agree to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. Questions for the applicant on this, at this juncture?
I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
The trucks are covered before they ever leave the building.
Yes, ma'am.
And how tall are the fences?
Six feet.
Would you eight feet? The fence?
Six feet, yeah.
Eight feet?
We got eight.
Eight feet.
Thank you.
You're a good auctioneer.
Commissioner, copy, ma'am. Do you have questions for the applicant?
No, I have talked in depth with the applicant's representative, and I think those questions I had have been answered.
Okay, excellent. Other questions, Commissioner Hinkle?
City blue trucks that pick up the blue bins don't come dump here. There's no food waste headed there. I mean--
The city blue trucks will not come here, no.
And your math doesn't work on a 24-hour deal. Somebody comes in at 5:00 on a Saturday, how do you get rid of it on a Sunday if the bigger dumps aren't open?
I'm sorry?
How do you get rid of something that comes in at 5:00 on a Saturday if the big dumps are closed on Sunday? And maybe they're not, I don't know. Maybe the big dumps are open on the weekend, too, but--
I mean, typically, what they have is what they're operating here is just the transfer stations. Again, the material has to be processed not for than 24 hours. At that point, it can be in the truck and be in the transport, be in transport to the landfill at that point.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay.
Not yet.
Okay. I've got a lot of folks signed up to speak. I'm gonna start with Mr. Groves. Mr. Groves?
Before I begin, may I hand out a--
Of course. And we have a copy of the exhibit book that was included in our packet from you as well. Understood.
Okay. Okay. If you'll direct your attention, please, to, oh, by the way, it's Eric Groves, 4001 North class. The little map I gave you is intended to help orient you to what's in the area. As you will see, there's a blue box that says Tri-City Customs on it. That's my client. To the immediate north of the area in red, which is the proposed refuse transfer station. As you can see, there are some uses to the north in addition to my client. They are light industrial, even though they're in an I-2 zone. There's not much to the west just yet. To the south is the Von Dell Smith mortuary, to the southwest, South Lake Park and soccer fields, and the I-44 roads on it as well. The problem with transfer stations is essentially they create problems which are very difficult to manage, and in some cases, can't be managed. There will be litter. There wouldn't be a need for fences if there weren't. The litter is just not going to come from the station alone. It's going to come from the trucks that are arriving. The photos we showed you from the Norman Transfer Station are emblematic of the kind of customers they're gonna have. Anybody's welcome. People come in with pickups. Trash is gonna blow out of them before they ever get there. In this case, there will be no, as they have admitted, there will be no segregation of waste, so everybody's welcome. Any kind of waste is welcome. And it's the argument that it's gonna be in and out in 24 hours doesn't mean very much when you consider that it's gonna be there for 24 hours. It's not fully enclosed. The doors will be wide open when it's in operation. That you can observe at the Norman Transfer Station. There really not much point to saying there's a wall when there's doors that don't serve at a wall. There will be construction debris. Dust is going to escape on its way to the facility. It's going to escape while it's in the facility. The same thing is true of odors from food waste, but it's not just the odor, it's what the odor is comprised of, and we have informed you that some of the elements of that odor are hazardous to the health. There will be people here today who will speak to you directly about the park and their concerns about the park and about the mortuary and other properties, but I speak just for my client who's immediately north of this facility. He doesn't want it because it's a detriment to the area. His name is Alan Brinkley. He's here, and I'm going to ask him to speak to you briefly. There's already an odor problem with the facility as it operates now. Probably more than one witness will tell you that. This expansion is so vast that it's going to create additional problems and is just a detriment to everybody, and I need not say anything about property values, but this kind of facility is a disincentive to investment in this area, and I think we'll have a witness who will explain that to you as well. So there's too, too many risks for too much, too little benefit, and it needs to go someplace else. There are no refuse transfer stations in Oklahoma City, and as I've said, for good reason. They're inherently problematic. That's why they are classified in a use unit that has nuisance characteristics. That's why OD and Q regulates them. That's why there's a prohibition against locating them within a half a mile of a public park. They are inherently problematic, and that's why the EPA has manuals that talk about how they should be handled. Unfortunately, in this case, the applicant gave no notice to anyone in the area that they were proceeding. The only way we found out about the hearing before the golf commission was by accident. So they were going through this process without notice, no meetings, no community involvement, no sighting. I think we might have had a different situation had we noticed and an opportunity to be heard. Any questions?
No, sir, not for me. Commissioners, questions from Mr. Groves? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet. Next person I'm gonna call on, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, it is not intentional, Jim, it looks like Cringle?
I'm Jim Cringle, owner of AAA Fiber Glass at 3940 Southwest 113th. The Ferguson's run a very professional, very good business next door to me. They've been good neighbors to me for three years, so it's not my intention to create an unfriendly situation between the two of us, but I have some concerns. One of the concerns is we have a two-lane road that is his frontage and my access that is already not in great condition. I have some concern with the heavy traffic and the heavy trucks that will be coming through. Other concerns that I have, on breezy days like we're having here today, the doors will be open, and we may have some trash blowing around. We hope that if, in the event that it does get put in, that we have some process controls in place to control that. The man that spoke before me spoke about the odor a little bit. We have a solid waste pit on the property next door. It's an evaporation pit, is my understanding. They flip it over occasionally. It'll smell pretty pungent for a short amount of time. That being said, I'm in the fiberglass business. It's not a very good smelling business. It's certainly not a bed of roses anybody wants to lay on, so we have some empathy there, if you will. We have some concern on the, we have 40 young people that work for us, you know, if anything's blowing out of the building that may be germ-ridden or unsanitary, maybe something that we could be concerned about. Again, if it should be approved, we want to see some control process there as well. That's what we got for you today.
Okay. We appreciate you taking the time to come down very much. Thank you. Okay. The next person I have signed up to speak is Matt Echols. We've heard so far about dust and odor, potentially harmful gas, which is referenced in a report provided by Mr. Groves, traffic, road conditions, and litter. Mr. Echols, do you have other things you think we need to know about today?
I'm with South Lake Soccer Club.
Start out by giving us your name and address for the record, okay?
I'm Matt Echols. Address is 12505 Lexington Drive.
Okay, thank you.
I'm with South Lake Soccer Club. We're here because there's a provision that says that this can't be within a half mile of a park. That's where we are. So the request now is, will we, will this board grant an exception to that provision?
We can't. I mean, what you're referencing, which is provided in Mr. Groves' report, which we were all provided a copy of and I read, is that requirement is one of DEQ. It's not something that we can alter, regulate, have any influence on, overturn, have say on, et cetera. So we can't even consider it, assuming that it hasn't been granted. That'll be a problem for the applicant and their ability to operate over and above what might be zoning or special permit issues with us today.
Okay. Following with that, the fact that we have that in place should tell us everything we need to know. There's a state law that says, don't put this within the space of a park. We're inside that park. We have thousands of people that are coming to this park on a regular basis, if not a nightly basis. The city is right now investing roughly somewhere approximately $15 million into the park. It doesn't make sense to break the state DEQ regulation to accommodate this particular business when there are other options for that. Right now, there is a dump, there's a dump on 240. We can go the other way. There's a dump on 40. This is approximately equidistant between the two, outside of being at the very edge of the city. So in order to get to it, for most people in the city, they will have to pass two dumps in order to reach this location. That also obviously will interfere with, that obviously was in a place where the state set up a law that it shouldn't be, that this place shouldn't be. So with that, we would ask you to decline the application.
Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Echols. We appreciate you taking the time to come down. The next person I have signed up to speak is Randy Elliott. Okay? Oh, you're coming? Mr. Elliott, on your way down, we've heard about the park, litter, road conditions, traffic, the odor, dust, and potentially the harmful contaminants in that dust and odor. Are there other things you want us to know about today, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Start out by giving us your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Elliott. I reside at 12305 Swan Haven Drive. I have lived in the zip code since about 1984. I'm a general contractor and developer. One of my more recent projects is a mile down the street. It's at the corner of Southwood Drive and Southwest 119th Street. It occupies addresses of 2101 through 2625 Southwest 119th. It's about a 70,000-square-foot medical office space. I recently acquired the property directly to the west and south of this proposed site, so I share the property line where it says "subject" there, which is about a 600 lineal foot, and then I return back to the east of another 100 feet or so. As I, when I purchased this property, and I've had possession of it for about a year now, it has a lot of trees on it, so we tried to preserve our trees. It came right after the October ice storm, but it was my intention to kind of continue on with the same type of development, is what I have on further to the east. In fact, I've kind of titled this thing "Water View West." It's intended to be a, it's, the development includes over a 25,000-square-foot Class A business space, including a training and venue facility. The main entrance for our building is located approximately 500 feet away from the proposed FER refuse transfer station. Our parking lot is about 70 feet away from the property line. We are zoned PUD 650, which allows for general cultural exhibits, administrative and professional offices, equipment sales and rentals, construction sales and equipment, eating establishments, food and beverages, participant recreation and entertainment, retail sales and services, spectator sports and entertainment, and many other uses. If approved, this exception to the rules as a special permit will adversely affect the use of our property. Our property consists of 26 acres with a four-acre lake. A heavily wooded and beautiful nature park encompasses our lake. It is a wonderful nature and fitness trail. It is, at its closest point, is just 200 feet away from the FER property line. 89% of all the FER stormwater and waste drainage will flow across this private lake and through, then down to the public lake of South Lakes, which is less than 3,000 feet away. Our lake has been used recreationally. Our plans include boathouses, canoes, kayak launches, gathering spaces, performance stages, and even lakeside dining. We're working on plans to install a public EV, electric charging stations publicly accessible for I-44 travelers, large format, three outdoor art exhibits, water features, and outdoor pavilions structures for corporate and social events. pavilions structures for corporate and social events. I purchased this building for corporate training, sales, product demonstrations, research and development, team collaboration, corporate team building. We currently have a gymnasium, an auditorium, several large training rooms, and over 40 private offices. These, these quality of life corporate amenities are located within 500 feet of the FER property. Again, our existing building and property uses are not compatible with the next-door use of waste transfer facility that is open to the open public. The proposed station is located within a popular soccer facility, a public golf course, public parks, nature parks, and like, park-like cemetery with numerous outdoor services, and several bodies of recreational waters and streams. An existing Class A office building is located approximately 500 feet away from the proposed transfer building. A nature trail and private lake is located just 200 feet north of the property. 89% of the stormwater will flow into the tributaries and public recreational bodies of the water. The proposed refuge transfer directly conflicts with the general conditions or general standards of this special permit. Specifically, the proposed use does not adversely affect the use of neighboring properties. I am a neighboring property owner. It will adversely, adversely affect the use of the property. Health and environmental concerns of airborne particles, storm runoff, odor, particular environment, transfer accidents, traffic in public infrastructure, wear and tear from moving 500 tons of trash in and out of one road seven days a week. The road infrastructure will not support the general, the traffic generated by this proposed use. Pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated will be hazardous or in conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in this area. The proposed, the proposal says trucks will be parked outside overnight with trash. This does not mean the requirement that all mandatory and
60 seconds, Mr. Elliott, just so you know.
As a long-term citizen, I just ask that you please deny this permit. I did have a few pictures of, this is actually the building that, that we have purchased, an interior picture, the same thing as what you have up above as far as your aerial. This is actually the tributary. This is the FER property. This is, the red property is the property which I own. 89% of the entire body of water that comes across this property will end up into this four-acre lake that I have, okay? I have been working with an overwhelmed dam down here. I create, I gained about two feet of elevation in water for every one inch of rainfall, okay? This pond right here was originally designed with the PUD of 650 back in 1998. It was for the TireTech facility, and it's about a 67-acre hydraulic study for that. If you take this tributary, we're bumping about 120, 130 acres, okay? Of which they are the last runoff before it comes to the
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. I'm sorry, your time has expired. I've got other people that want to be heard today. I apologize to have to interrupt you. Next person I have signed up to speak is Sean Abenato, Abenato? I hope I got close. Mr. Abenato, adverse impacts of use, park adjacency uses have been added to our list of concerns.
That's a long list.
It's a long list.
Very long list. Sean Abenato, 12913 Preakness Road. It's good to see you guys again. I'm HOA President Williamson Farms. And as Mr. Box stated, we were recently here due to another situation, and here we find ourselves here again. Just to echo, I think, some of the sentiments we've heard today. One of Mr. Box's statements was, "These are very valuable to communities." My question is, then why is there not one in Oklahoma City already? Just a thought. Williamson Farms is not opposed to commercial development. We understand we have a residential neighborhood that is going to have commercial development around us. We have a lot of commercial development around us, and we welcome it. We have the solar company and the doggy daycare and trailer storage, and we have a lot of things like this. We welcome it. We don't mind that. Most of those are enclosed in metal fab buildings that are truly enclosed. As you saw in the video, those doors stay open. And all I've got to say about smell, and I know we've already addressed that, is this. I have three teenagers, and we have an automatic garage, not a garage, but a trash can. And it opens and closes all the time, and we take trash out quicker than 24 hours. You know what? The smell is in my house because I have three teenagers. My point being is that we want commercial development, like the gentleman that just spoke, but we are opposed to anything like this that's going to be waste-related. We dealt with it with PDS, we dealt with it with K&amp;M, and now we're dealing with it with FER. So I just appreciate your time, but just know that Williamson Farms did meet with them. We had some questions raised, and they did not respond back to us. So we're just here to say we do oppose it, and we do agree with everything else that's been spoken in terms of the opposing of this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Abenato. We appreciate you joining us again. You've had to be here regularly. Yes?
Mr. Abenato?
Yes?
Could you tell us, please, what the questions were that you had that you feel like have not been addressed?
I'm just the incoming HOA president. When I did meet with the VP just the other night, she said that they had several questions that were not answered.
But you couldn't tell us what they were specifically?
No, ma'am, I was not given a copy of those.
Thank you.
Next person I have signed up to speak is Chris, is it Cotner? Every once in a while, you get lucky, you know what I mean? Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Chris Cotner, 17517 Melville Lane, in that goofy area of northwest Oklahoma City that has an Edmund address, so. My, I also represent Mr. Kringle on this matter, and I'm not going to rehash anything that's been said. Counsel for both sides has been able and confident, and more than confident, how they presented. However, it seems to me like there is a lot of planning for game seven before they've won the championship here, and that is related to the fact that the Park Commission still has denied the request for the letter that DEQ requires in order for there to be a waiver. So until that is handled, until that's all settled with the Park Commission, it doesn't seem to me like there's much point in approving anything. Again, it's, we don't know yet what's going to happen, so.
That decision that they would make would be a recommendation to city council, is that correct?
It's been appealed to the city council.
Understood.
Yeah, but I think they had, I think the Park Commission had jurisdiction whether they were going to issue the letter or not. So that appeal, I think, is currently in front of the city council. So until that's settled, I'm not sure why anything would be approved, so.
Got it.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you coming down. Next person I have signed up to speak is Alan Brinkley. Mr. Brinkley, are you?
Yes, thank you. I'm Alan Brinkley. I live at 2622 Walnut Road in Norman. Eric Groves is my attorney. My company, ARB Real Prop, bought the property adjoining the FER property. We're adjoining on the north. It says RV Sales on this. We acquired it about three years ago. Kind of a rundown, light industrial use. During that time, we've invested tons of money on the property. We've turned it into more of a commercial and light industrial property, put in new parking lots, really invested a lot in the community. What attracted me to this area was everything around it. I couldn't believe how it's built up through the years. There's, you know, the new gas station on the corner, the mortuary and cemetery is a beautiful area, the South Lake parks, and then right across the road, the golf course and Early Wine Park. It's a beautiful area. The industrial use around it is light, very compatible with what I wanted to do with the property. The gentleman that just spoke, that Mr. Elliott that has the property to the southwest, it's a beautiful campus. I couldn't believe that that is, that that property was there, and I'm glad to see that he's present to protest this. I know the Ferguson family that runs FER, known them for years. I have no problem with them. They're great neighbors. I just think to bring in a transfer station application and plunk this thing down in the middle of a, of a pre-existing area that's been built up through the years and continues to build up in a commercial way is just wrong. There's so many other places you could put a transfer station on a larger tract of land away from previous development, and then let people move in up against it if they want to. That's what was done up in Edmund at the transfer station that was put in there. I have, I like transfer stations. I've been to the one in Norman many times with, with my load of trash. It has an odor. When I, when I walk out, I unload my trash and I leave, I almost have to wash my tennis shoes because of the stink on the shoes. You want to hold your breath in there. I think the trash, even though it's moved in and moved out, it has a smell to it. It puts a smell in everything around it. It soaks into the concrete. It's really a messy operation, and to do that in an area that's like this, I think, is not fair to the adjoining landowners. The other big concern I have is, I just think of the magnitude of this, 500 tons of trash moved in and out every day. And the FER can run a perfect operation, but they don't have control over all of the different people that haul in the dumpsters, the trailer loads of trash, the trash that's going to come in from Newcastle, Blanchard, Mustang. You know, if people have an opportunity to bring their trash in and dump it in a building rather than drive to a landfill, yeah, they'll probably do that. But let's put that transfer station somewhere better. When we started looking at this situation, I found this EPA manual online, a manual for decision-making about transfer stations, and it has incredible information about how to properly put something like this in, how you involve the community, how you give notice to everybody around. There's lots of citing decisions.
Portions of that were also included in, in Mr. Groves' brief that he provided to us as well, which I read, yeah.
And so I think there's, there's a way to do this that will benefit the city, a way to do it that'll benefit FER. They just need to go put it someplace else. That's our biggest concern. As I said, I want to be a good neighbor, but I don't think that, that this is the right spot for this, for this facility at this time. The area, it just has so much potential, residential, commercial. It's building up in a very nice way. It's, and I'm proud to be a corporate or an LLC neighbor to all these folks. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brinkley. We appreciate you taking the time to join us today. We really do. Next person I've signed up to speak is Bob Sullivan.
My name's Bob Sullivan, and my address is 611 Northwest 7th in Oklahoma City. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I've been doing that for about 30 years and have a company, NAI Sullivan Group. I worked with Alan when we were out looking about three years ago for a site for him, for an industrial investment. And I did not have this particular property listed for sale, but found it for him, and we looked at that and several others. One of the reasons that Alan picked this site was because of the developing area and how things were growing up and developing around this particular site, and felt like that would continue to happen, which it has. I also had the opportunity to work with the Edmund Transfer Station about 12 years ago. We had that property for sale, and I had firsthand knowledge of that operation, why it was put in a remote area that it was in northeast Edmund. And I really believe that what is happening in this area of Oklahoma City to put that transfer station would have a very negative impact on values that are already established. It's a situation where if you look at Edmund, and you know where their transfer station is located, and people that would then want to locate around that transfer station, it's already existing, and they know what they're getting into when they locate there. To have a property that is a growing business and to say this transfer station then is going to be located next to your business, you have to ask yourself, would you locate your business there if the transfer station were there already? And I think that you've heard from everyone today that has said, no, they wouldn't. And so I think the economic impact to those that are around the proposed site is just too much of a negative for you to consider for that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down and joining us today. That is the last person that I had sign up to speak on this item. I'll ask if there's anybody else, just a second, Mr. Box, who would like to be heard? Okay, excellent. I love that, that we got to hear from everybody who wanted a chance, is what I mean. Commissioners, any general discussion? I want to give the applicant 60 seconds or so, but any general discussion we need to have at this time?
I guess I, I am curious to know whether, in addition to the board of the Neighborhood Association, whether you reached out to your neighbors, specifically your business neighbors in this area, before you chose this site or before you launched this endeavor?
So my client owns and already operates there today.
How long have they been there?
Four years. Four years. Most of this, at one point, was owned, operated by Chesapeake. I did reach out to Mr. Groves at some point in this, what has now been a year, I believe, process, and asked, should we meet? And Eric and I meet all the time. In this one, he was very upfront and honest and said, I don't think we could get there. Fair enough. So with all due respect to the, the new HOA member, we had a Zoom meeting with the HOA Board last February. It was a lengthy Zoom meeting. We asked to follow up. We gave all of our contact information with any questions, any additional concerns. None were raised. We asked specifically, do you think we should have a large-scale meeting with the general neighborhood? The response from the board was no. Your proximity away from us being a mile, this, at that, at that time, this was a very different situation than the Prairie Dirt Solutions, which of course is in their backyard. We ran all the traps that we thought necessary. So it's news to me that now the new board says there are unanswered questions. Of course, they're unaware of what those questions are. So we're over a mile away from Williamson Farms. I do want to address the issue
As to your immediately surrounding business neighbor.
So we, I reached out to Eric. Eric is in communication with the group. He's done a very good job of riling everyone up. And I asked him a question, should we meet? And he said, no, we don't think we can get there on this one. So this is about the fifth hearing we've had on this. So, I mean, there has been ample opportunity to try to find. The problem is, I think, what we heard was, we don't have a problem with the use, we just don't want it in our backyard. Well, of course, that, that's why we have Conference of Plan designations, and we have, you know, the facts before us that say it's heavy industrial. And I'll go back to where I started. The designation simultaneously concentrates heavy industrial users away from existing or future neighborhoods while preserving prime land that has attributes critical to industrial businesses such as proximity to highway. And the gentleman who has the operation mainly north, it's a fiberglass manufacturing facility, to his own admission, it doesn't smell like roses, I believe is what he said. And, and that's great, because of course, that's, that's what we expect to find in a heavy industrial designated area.
David, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The business is active as it is now. This is in addition to an active business.
Yes, sir.
Describe what goes on there on a daily basis now prior to this going in.
If you may, I'll let my client.
No, I want to hear your version.
We need someone knowledgeable, yeah.
Keith Ferguson, 11501 South I-44 Service Road. Every day, we have a water treatment plant in the back. We bring in restaurant grease. We bring in old water separator material. We have probably the best state-of-the-art water treatment system in the city. When they, when the DEQ and the city people want to bring people out, they come to us. We run a great facility there. It's always clean. Our trucks are always clean. We keep our trash picked up. We also run a division that hauls industrial waste and hazardous waste. That's how we started 25 years ago here in Oklahoma City, me and a pickup truck, basically.
All out of this location?
No, sir. We have grown and moved and grown and moved. I've been on the west side, I've been to the east side.
Go through what you've got on this side.
On this side, we have our water treatment, we have our offices, and we have a maintenance facility. We run trucks in and out all day because they have to come and go, bring in water. We have other customers that come to us, too. We have the drying beds. We bring in muds from your car washes, you know? We bring it in, we process it through. Yes, it does have an odor to it. I mean, a lot of us have swam in ponds before, and when you go in the old farm pond and stir up the mud, everybody, you know, could smell what was in it. It's just the inorganics that are. We bring it in, we clean it up, and we treat the water, discharge that to the city. Right now, we probably run close to 700, 800,000 gallons, 700,000 or 800,000 gallons a month that we run through and clean the water. I've been doing this since 1983. I've either been in the hazardous waste business or this, doing this. I've either been in the hazardous waste business or doing this. I'm a strong proponent for the EPA. There's good and bad about it. We always do the best that we can. We have 45 employees. I don't know what else you'd want to know about what we do.
Does that help you, Commissioner?
Permit and by right. I mean, everything he just described is permitted by right today under the site, I-2's out.
And we have people next door to us. I mean, his fiberglass, you know, there is an odor to it. There's also a case of that when there's that much in the air. I've been in this business long enough. That's a carcinogen, whereas trash is just an odor. We have another heavy industrial use down the road, World Water Works, custom manufacturing. Trucks are coming in and out of there all day long. On the corner of where Mr. Brinkley's office place is, there's trucks coming and going all day. Not only are trucks coming up and down the service road, but trucks going down there. We have a marijuana, Lord help us, the marijuana grower, I don't know if y'all have ever been around one, but our office smells like skunk when the wind's out of the north. I have a 70,000-square-foot marijuana facility by my house, and we smell like skunk all day long. So all those odors are there. I'm not coming here to complain about them because we're in an area that we do things that make us smell. And it's, you know, everybody has their little deal, but-
Understood. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Just a sec. Commissioner Coffey, one second. Go ahead, Commissioner Highsmith.
I mean, the biggest item to me really is frankly something that Mr. Box has brought up, which is that the comprehensive plan and the existing zoning contemplate heavy industrial use. The area seems to have a good amount of these types of uses. To me, like, I don't know that since I've been on the planning commission, any of these kinds of uses have ever came through without a protest. And I actually do, to some degree, empathize with the question of, if not here, where? And so I think it's a fair question. I think it's fair to ask in a sense, like, we might be one of the biggest landmass cities in America, but somehow, there's nowhere to put these things. And so I guess to me, if our city staff, in a recent effort, Plan OKC, came through and did their best to find these places, and this was one of the few, I do put a little bit of weight into that. And so for me, I guess my question would be, again, to staff to say, do we feel like we made the right choice here? Or are we looking back and, I mean, we've got a recommendation here from staff, but I guess I'm asking again, like-
It's a good question. This is in, as was stated, it's in heavy industrial, but it's on, this property is the border of heavy industrial. And as was stated earlier, heavy industrial is meant to be the place where you can go to do, I mean, things that have impacts. You shouldn't have to worry as much about compatibility. But having said that, it is on the edge, and even, I mean, a non-typical, really, use like this, it could potentially have trash blowing around, all the concerns, it could have a smell. We don't really know how the distance, you know, that that would cover. So, yeah, we, you know, the recommendation, you know, it is what it is. Doesn't mean there aren't concerns, and it doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, fully address what possible impacts they might have and whether or not what they're proposing is going to do the job, the fencing and the structure and so forth.
And I think to that point, that's why we've further burdened ourselves with the doors, the 24 hours, the washing of the floors. Like, because of special permit, we've added these things to the program description, the multiple fences. Like, I'm not sure what else could be done.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Highsmith? Have you gotten the information you need?
As much as possible. I think it seems like it's just up to us to do our best.
That's why we're here.
I'd like the opportunity to rebut Mr. Box.
One second, please. Commissioner Coffey, ma'am, I believe you had a comment you wanted to make, and I was coming to you next.
My questions can wait until, I just had a couple of questions on behalf of the homeowners. They can wait until later.
Okay. Mr. Grove, if you want to respond to something, I'll give you 60 seconds.
Yes, in response to what the planning director said and to what Commissioner Highsmith said, this is not a use of right in that district. It's regulated by special permit. So when the staff evaluates an application like this, they have two ordinances to consider. One are very general standards for a special permit, and the other is for special permit in this use unit. This use unit is set aside, heavy public protection, for things that are problems, such as refuse transfer stations. So this is a use on review. That's why we're here. You can't just come into an I-2 district and do this. It has to be reviewed by y'all. I wanted to respond to a question from Commissioner Powers as far as the process is concerned. David wasn't in on this initially, neither was I. FER went out on their own. They went to Cleveland County, which I've mentioned in my brief. We had no notice or opportunity to be heard on that. FER didn't reach out to my client or any of the other neighbors to the north.
Are there notice requirements involved with those hearings?
Well, I don't think Cleveland County, well, yes and no. The county process for this kind of thing affords a hearing and an opportunity to be heard and comment, but I don't see a notice requirement in that statute. But if FER, I mean, FER did what they did because they knew there was going to be protest. They didn't tell us about it. They went to the golf, yeah, the Golf Commission. We had no notice from the Golf Commission or from FER that they were going to go there. By the time I got into the case, Cleveland County had already ruled on it. It didn't approve it. It just said it's consistent with their plan. And so had the Golf Commission. We found out about the Park Commission by accident, and I was able to make an appearance there. So FER moved on this thing kind of surreptitiously, and I think they did that because they knew there was going to be trouble over it. By the time, and David reached out to me on it, sure, after he got involved, after I got involved, after the Golf Commission, after Cleveland County, and when it was time to go to the Park Commission. And I said to David, as I say to you, this isn't the right place or the right time for this facility. It needs to go someplace else. That's why Edmund's out in the woods, that's why Norman's out in the woods. There are places for these things, but not in an established area where it's going to have an adverse effect.
We understand. We understand. Commissioners, other questions on this or other things you want to discuss? Commissioner Clare?
I'd like some clarification. Park Commission has been brought up a couple of times. Where in the process do they fall? Are they supposed to make a recommendation prior to it being heard here or see counsel or vice versa?
It's a separate tract. Mr. Box, since you're the applicant on it, why don't you provide an update on where you are in the process?
Two separate things. A letter of no adverse impact and a special permit. The letter of no adverse impact went to the Golf Commission, recommended approval, went to the Park Commission, recommended denial. It's at city council. The desire of city council was to have that application and the special permit application all heard at the same time. They are wholly separate analysises, though. What you guys are looking at is this special permit, under the standards outlined in the code, under page three of your staff report, where there are four requirements, all four of which are complied with.
Those are, just to be clear, for the purposes of the record, those are four specific standard requirements associated with the use unit, which is what Mr. Grove was alluding to earlier. Those specific standards are set out on page three, as Mr. Box alluded, under subsection four, A, B, C, and D. Staffs provided comments to how each of those matters are complied with in this application.
And so the question before the council on the DEQ regulation is wholly separate from the matter before you. Council will hear both of them once we're done here, but it has absolutely no bearing, no relevance whatsoever. It's a waiver from DEQ that's dealt with up there about proximity to a park, not whether the use is appropriate in a heavy industrial area.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Clare?
Yes.
Okay.
If I might add to that, yes, this is a parallel proceeding. Went to the Park Commission. The Park Commission's job was to decide, will this have an adverse effect on the park? If the Park Commission believes it will not, then it can waive it, waive any objection under the ODEQ rule. Well, six to two, they said, we think it will have an adverse effect. That is on appeal to the city council. Working with the city lawyers, David and I regarded it as an appeal. David filed his appeal. I filed my response. It will be heard together with this permit, separate proceeding. But if you look at the specific standards for a special use permit for this use unit, number B, I think it is, says, you've got to determine it will have no adverse effect on neighboring properties. Now-
That's item two under general standards.
Oh, under general standards, pardon me. Well, that's a determination that has to be made by y'all.
That's why we're here.
Right. And what the soccer club is saying is that it will have an adverse effect on the park, and that is a neighboring property and a LSE of the city, no less. And it's always struck me as odd that the Park Department never notified its LSE that this proceeding was going on. So-
Okay. I understand. I appreciate the comments. Any commissioners have comments? We're going to turn this discussion inward here.
Yep. A question for clarification, I think I know. First, I'm going to make a point here, but it's, as I look on page two of what we have, it shows the zoning around it, and I see to the west, the zoning is I-2, but it's PUD 650. So that's the underlying zoning of the PUD is I-2.
Correct.
Says to the south, it doesn't say zoning, it just says PUD 650. Is that also I-2?
Yes.
So they're all I-2 all around. Okay. That's what I thought. And, I mean, the thing I keep in the balance here is it's all I-2, but it's developed in a different way. And the gentleman farthest in the back, I start to be quite sympathetic, I see how beautiful the spot you have there, but it was built in I-2. So that's, this is just really tough. It's perfect in an I-2, where else are you going to put it? But this I-2, a bunch of people around there have built nice things. So I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to clarify, they are all I-2, even the one to the south that just says PUD 650?
Everything that you see on the map that is on the screen presently is either based in I-2 or is I-2 zoning. And that extends, I will say this, too, that extends to the west, if I'm not mistaken, all the way to the next, at least the next mile, which is Meridian. So it's heavy industrial, another mile to the west, where it then comes into impact with employment reserve. And I certainly, and, you know, Commissioner Powers oftentimes has been able to connect the past decisions of the commission to our present for us. I'm assuming that that employment reserve was placed there basically to protect the airport.
Okay. And thank you for that, for going farther than my map shows. If the I-2 continues the west maybe a mile, what about south? What is the cemetery? And what is that bottom-left corner, the PUD 828? What is the base zoning of those? Do we know?
PUD 1100, I don't know the answer. JJ Shaking, he said that he doesn't know the answer. I-2 is on the other side of the highway, on both sides, on the corners, and across to the east as well.
And then that PUD 828, is that the soccer fields maybe? Do we know what the-
Yes.
-base zoning is of that? Is that one of the only ones around that's not I-2?
Yeah, that's not going to be I-2. I don't know the answer to that, what the base zoning district, because I'm assuming, given what it is, it's probably an R1-type base. But it would be immediately across the street from what is I-2.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Coffey?
I have a quick question or two, if the applicant could come back to the mic.
Mr. Ferguson, if you could come forward, please.
By far of the most frequent concerns that have been expressed to me, particularly by the homeowners, and I've had a brief discussion with Mr. Box, are the blowing litter and the obnoxious smell. What are the possibilities if you're requiring all of the vehicles, particularly those that are containing construction waste and so on, have to do with the blowing litter? What are the possibilities of requiring all of those vehicles being tarp'd as they bring debris in?
You talking about the vehicles that come to us?
Yes, being tarp'd.
Every trash hauler in Oklahoma City has to tarp their trucks.
Okay, so all of those-
Every commercial trash hauler has to be covered.
So you can require those vehicles that come to your facility to be tarp'd?
Well, you can't require people from the public.
Control someone driving from Newcastle with a pickup truck coming to my facility if it blows out.
Areas such as Blanchard and Newcastle.
Just like I can't control someone flipping a cigarette butt out their window.
So areas coming from other areas, such as Blanchard and Newcastle and Tuttle, can you require those to be tarp'd?
It's a DOT, it's-
That's a DOT, Keith.
So, just to clarify, I want to make sure Commissioner Coffey and everybody else is clear, there's two things at play here. What Mr. Ferguson is referring to is that other regulatory authorities have the ability to regulate people who have permits, like commercial trash hauling trucks, things of that nature. Members of the public who can use this facility could leave their driveway, to your point, with a truck and a trailer uncovered and drive down the street, let all the trash blow over the highway before they get to the facility and never drop it off.
And if-
And it happens.
And if entities such as restaurants and so on that are carrying organic waste, is there a requirement that they be encapsulated, such as in trash bags and so on? They're particularly concerned about trucks and trailers that are waiting to enter your facility, that trash and smells and so on doesn't escape from those vehicles.
Well, trash has a little bit of an odor. Most of your trash really smells because the oxygen is cut off to it. I know everybody has a trash can at home, and you put your trash in it. Three days later, because you only get picked up once a week, you open the lid, and oh my God, you know, it's, but it wasn't that day, the first day. It's five, six days later is when the odor starts. We bring stuff in, we have to have it out in 24 hours. So nothing is going to be there long enough to, and it's going to be open, so the smell won't be near as bad as what your personal trash can is, where it's been sitting there for a week. And the reason it smells is because you have the lid closed, and you're cutting off any oxygen to get to it, and you're just making anaerobic, you know, bad air. We're not covering it up. It's going to be gone in a truck, a tarp truck, going to a landfill.
And is there any possibility, as it relates to the doors, opening and closing, closing those doors when trucks are unloading inside?
Well, there's two issues there. One is OSHA. With trucks being in there, most of them diesel, we're not into electric trucks yet, is the exhaust off those trucks. And the cars and the heavy equipment that we have in there, you've seen the video, the city of Norman has a big front-end loader, it runs on diesel, and you have to have the doors open or, you know, your employees are going to be passed out. So we have to have an air circulation of some, you know, something in there to keep it going because of all the vehicles coming in and out. We'll shut the doors at the end of the day and all night. I mean, we're not going to be, you know, just leaving it wide open.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your questions, Commissioner Coffey?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners? Okay. Well, I'll take a stab at getting our general discussion started, and we'll kind of see where we are as a group. I was incredibly sympathetic to Williamson Farms when we had the dirt mining case. It seemed crazy to me that we even had to hear that, to be honest with you. It was very obvious what to do in that situation because of the impact, the immediate impact that the expansion of that operation was going to have, and it was immediately adjacent to the neighborhood. I'm very concerned for Williamson Farms because north of this property is industrial real estate that the airport would not likely support being residential. We don't know that. We don't know how it might play out. But I can tell you that right now, we could go pull a permit, and I could put a lot of what your neighborhood would view as obnoxious uses just by pulling a permit on the north boundary of the neighborhood across the street. And if somebody came in and needed a special permit of some sort in this area, particularly with the overlay, they're going to have a really strong argument, as the applicant does here, in my view, because this is precisely where we want to locate this stuff. I am 100% certain that no matter where we put this, we would have people in here saying the exact same things and making the exact same arguments, and it would be the exact same list that you guys have given us. And those are understandable concerns that you guys have raised. I am of the opinion that this is an appropriate location. It is understandable why they want to operate here. They have incredibly close proximity to the interstate. They're surrounded by industrial properties. There are a lot of areas in Oklahoma City that are zoned industrially, where other types of development have taken hold. And you always run the risk, as a property owner, on the investment side of things, that if you buy in an area where other things are zoned, out your back door tomorrow, there it is. It's happened to me. It happens to anyone who stays in real estate long enough. So that argument doesn't really carry a lot of weight. It's just a part of investing, and it's a part of the risk you take when you do it. But I'm looking at this, they're going, they meet the specific standards that are outlined by my staff report, in some cases, way above what would be required. For example, there's 15 acres here over- For example, there's 15 acres here, over at least a minimum of five. We are well over the 500 feet from occupied dwellings that's required here, no lot lines that border a residential district. There's not a residential district within a mile of here, unless it's to the east, and I can't see it, excluding the golf course. I just feel like this is precisely what these standards were crafted for, and that this use cleanly fits within it. That's, that's my opinion. I agree with the idea that we make the perimeter fencing eight feet, which was proposed by Commissioner Powers or requested by Commissioner Powers. I think that makes some sense, just to try to capture the litter, more of it, if there is any. I don't know how much of it will escape, I really don't know. It seems rational to me that there'll be some, but I think the eight-foot fence is a reasonable request. Those are my thoughts, I don't know, I'll turn it over to somebody else.
I'll, I'll jump in and back that up, because to me, I think my questions earlier indicate, you know, kind of where I'm at. I don't, I agree, like, I don't know that there's a single piece of dirt in the city where you could propose this and not have this same meeting. I, I mean, what do you do when you got this type of facility? You go look at the zoning map and try to find a place for it. Where else would you put it? I mean, this is exactly the kind of spot you look for. It's great that they already have it. It sounds like they use very, very similar high-intensity industrial right now. I got to tell you, like, on the, on the, in terms of the building itself, I have no concerns about trash blowing out of it. I think, I think there's rightful concerns about the trucks that bring it in, but the siding of the building, to me, and, you know, predominant direction of wind in Oklahoma, as well as we know it, I don't think there's a chance that there's a concern there. That's my personal opinion. I, I did think that the property that the gentleman in the back owns to the southwest was very interesting, it's obviously, even just looking on a map, it's obviously a beautiful property. I mean, it got a lake and a walking path around it, and all kinds of cool stuff, but it also was obvious to me, based on the history of the site, that that was built knowing, you know, kind of what was going on in the area. It's a risk that you took, and, and I'm sorry to say, in this case, at least for me, I'm going to, you know, to, I guess to wrap this up, like, I just don't know how else to approach this, but to support this in a zoning sense. Now, everybody does need to remember, this is, this is a recommendation to council on the zoning, but for the reasons stated, I don't know how else to approach it personally, but, but to say that, I think, you know, we're doing our best right now with this type of recommendation, and that's where I stand, so...
I don't, I don't think it's accurate, really, to say that it's a...
Your mic's off.
Maybe I just don't have it here.
No, you have.
I'm sorry. I don't think it's really accurate to talk about it as a zoning case, per se. It's a special permit, and it had, that comes with a special set of requirements. I say, this is a very complicated case for me, it's very difficult. I hope this doesn't cause a riot. It's really not the neighbors in the residential area that have, that I'm most concerned about. I think about the location of this place, and where it is in relation to them, and predominance of the wind and all that kind of stuff. They're not my biggest concern, but it is clear that the operation, it seems to me, anyway, to be clear, that the operation of this facility will have a very serious impact on the property owner, most directly to the west and southwest. And, you know, one of the requirements for special permit approval is that it not negatively impacts the neighbors, so that's kind of a hurdle. I take that requirement very seriously. It's not something you just go, oh, well, it's not that big a deal, or it's not going to hurt them any more than some of the other uses that are already there. And this is a special permit for this use, and in order to approve it, I think we have to be able to get beyond that hurdle. I'm not sure I can. There also was some discussion, although limited, and I'll have to take this up with the chairman later, but I think it's not necessarily in our best interest to let one person speak to an issue and then nobody else gets to talk about that, because I think in this case, the access to the property and the viability of the infrastructure, and whether it's up to this task, is a significant one, and it is also one of the general standards that is required to be met here, that it have access to a street, having adequate right-of-way, and improvements to support the traffic generated by the proposed use. I don't feel like I've seen enough information about that, very specifically. It's not, it's not the same, well, there's already trucks, and so it's not that big a deal. This is, this special permit, these are the requirements that have to be met to approve this special permit, and I think we have to take them seriously. I do, and I, I'm having a really hard time getting past at least those two, if not others.
If I may?
Sure.
It's interesting how I agree with you both, and that's why I've been balancing is the two. Maybe it's this last piece, and it's so subjective, so it's, yes, it's I-2 and everything Ace has said, but this is a special permit. When I read these general standards, I see that it doesn't pass. It shall not adversely affect the neighbors, the traffic, drainage, odor, all these things, but then the last standard is that we may impose specific conditions. The question to me is just whether the specific conditions then placed make it to where you can vote for it or not, and I guess all these conditions, the eight-foot fence, the door closures, detention ponds, the hours, it's enclosed, all those things, is, which way it's, this is completely balanced until you get to there. So, it's, it's tough, but maybe it's, maybe enough has been done, and nobody's going to be happy wherever this is, but has enough been done for it to be in this location?
Well, and I guess that was my point, was, I feel like, I feel like it's an acceptable use, and to me, you know, based on the discussion we had, and to me then, how we, how we wrap it up is in the mitigating efforts, and almost like a spud, right, we've got this ability, and to me, it's like, okay, well, if you agree with the point of like, where else, you know, if not here, then it's more, how do we, how do we, again, mitigate from here? And I feel like we've done a lot of that negotiating, but potentially, we should do more, but...
Personally, I would very much like to hear, again, from the gentleman who owns the property, to the west and the southwest, as to whether there are mitigations that he believes would reduce the impact of this use on his property.
I agree, that would be good. That's the one that's been bothering me the most, even though he knew it was an I-2, nonetheless, he is a neighbor, and this needs to not adversely affect the neighbor.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, are you going to come back up and rejoin us, sir? So the question is just, are there other things that you can think of, that you could suggest to the commission and to the applicant, of conditions that could be imposed that would satisfy you or assist you with your use of your property?
Well, obviously, site screening, smells, all the same things that Mr. Groves and et cetera, and the rest of the people have brought up of, I'm not sure how you handle site screening when you're dealing with a 30, 40-foot building, the smells and so forth. Again, supposedly 38% goes another direction, but 62% come my direction. I don't really know, I mean, again, with, I think it continues on with the city, that your infrastructure, to be able to maintain 5,000 or 500 tons of daily trash in and out, whether it's coming in, again, I don't think that you're going to have, they don't have any control of the, of the public that's coming in and utilizing the facility, as far as truck, covering their vehicles and so forth. And I just really feel like that, again, from a special permit standpoint, that this really falls in there, that this is a very, a special area of Oklahoma City that seems to be changing very rapidly. I'm not sure what the master plan, the date of the master plan, when this was actually put into an I-2 zoning, what that date was. It makes sense that you are creating a buffer zone around the airport location. However, since that time, you've had Amazon come in place, you have roughly 7,500 cars, I think I counted on Ziggle in the parking lot the other day, anticipating coming on to 20,000 people, okay, on a daily basis going to this, so you already have that traffic input coming to this location. Not only that, but you also have 20,000 people that are needing their open airspace and et cetera, and I shared a little concept possibly with Jeff of, of some things maybe the city could do with all the properties that they have, between the South Lakes, the Early Wine Park, the Early Wine Golf Course, the buffering zone that's outside of your restricted area of the airport, but on the south side of 104th Street, going from Portland, I believe, all the way to MacArthur. Again, I don't have any doubts that the Ferguson's and the FER are capable of operating a facility like this, as well as anybody could probably do it. I just don't feel like this is the best place, the best location in Oklahoma City for this, for this activity. You have a corridor, I-44 coming in, there's about 55,000 people that are traveling that on a daily basis, okay? You're going to see that same amount of trash, that whatever percentage falls out of 500 tons per day, okay, whether it's coming in or going out, along those same corridors, creating your, your perspective of what people are, you know, are seeing as Oklahoma City. Again, it's, it's a very high-traffic area, the service road that presently is in front is, is, is well inadequate, okay? It's almost impassable for anything other than trucks, for the most part. I see that problem continuing to get worse. But as far as what concessions could be there, again, I guess we're dealing with visual and smells, I mean, your, your human senses, and I'm not sure what kind of concessions you could do in that close proximity to it.
Yep, Mr. Chair, if I may, I feel like it's almost unfair to ask this gentleman, because he's not an expert in what they could do to mitigate it, so other than the subject matters you mentioned, Mr. Box may be prepared to add some things, but what I would say is, I certainly hope you do have more to offer, because right now, you may not have the votes here. You can hear, it's tough for a lot of us. Whatever you can offer, make it more likely you get approval here, and I think it could be influential. If you, I'm hearing you still haven't got the park to agree, you still haven't gotten the city council to agree, so not only just to get us, what, you guys are the experts for all of these different protesters, that I appreciate they all had unique complaints, most of them did, so what else? Bring it all and bring it now, what else can the experts do?
Briefly, a lot of the vision that he has isn't approved under his PUD, would require rezoning, that the airport would be standing here at the podium, saying, absolutely not. So, I respect his desire to have restaurants and large-scale art installations where people would be congregating, but of course, this is AE1, that's the most restrictive airport environment zone we have, and the airport would absolutely object, and much like me, anytime I have a case that is in the AE district, I go to the airport first, because I know, if the airport shows up to that podium and says no, it's going to be nine to nothing that it gets denied. So with that said, of course, a lot of what he told you that he wants to do, not going to happen, short of some extraordinary change in leadership and policy at the airport. What if we proposed to plant trees on 10-foot centers along the southern line? There's already trees, Cindy, could you go to the aerial, please? There are trees.
I'd like in-depth explanation of every one of those slides, please.
Not today.
I'm prepared.
They were in our packet for review.
So if you look to the west, there's already solid trees. So if we propose trees on 10-foot centers, which of course is more aggressive than the tree center that we would normally request, 10-foot centers from our west property line up until the point of the building, the proposed building, so trees on 10-foot centers along that southern line. So now, we've, we've added trees, eight-foot fence, we have two rows of fences, we have 24-hour requirement, the stuff to process, we're cleaning the floors every night.
I, I'll just say, given Commissioner LaForte's comment, I mean, I don't know where other people are. I'm, was vocal about it, I'm supportive of the application, for all the reasons I articulated. If there are other people who are on the fence, and there's information that they need, this would be the time to get it. I think we're to a point where we need to see where we are, unless there are other things that have yet to be addressed in the minds of commissioners, so...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at this, particularly, and orienting it to the, the circulation that you were discussing, which side of the building is open?
The southeast, away from...
So here?
Yes, ma'am.
That's where...
That's where people will drive in.
Drive in. And then, do they drive out the back, or do they...
Same way. Because the back, if you remember, is that concrete wall.
Yes, and so that's here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because the doors are faced away from him.
But that's also where, isn't it next to the wall, is where the truck backs in to be loaded?
Yes, and then the chute for the truck is right here, and it leaves like this.
Okay, okay.
So, but if there are other mitigating factors, to your point, like, we can do trees...
But, in my view, between the fencing and the trees and the other things that are proposed, everything else, whatever issues are going to be created, they're being created by the use.
Yes.
You can't, you can't mitigate it to nothing. It's just not possible, given the use.
Myself personally, I would very much like to see additional trees along the west line as well.
Trees along the west line, too.
So, there's tree cover there that you're preserving?
Yeah, if you can see the area.
Yes.
There's a tree line.
We got three trees, and yes, there's two trees.
Can we add more trees on the west? We'll add that same requirement to the west.
Okay.
Evergreen?
Yes.
So we're specifying evergreen trees? Okay. Okay. Any other comments from commissioners, or do we want to try a motion and see where we are?
Maybe, can I ask one more question? Let's talk a little bit about the roadway. What kind of shape is it in? Is it really going to support the use you need to make of...
I believe so. I've driven it, I've been out there, and I've seen the facility. Of course, your traffic staff responded with an asterisk to say, no, no negative comments. So, there hasn't been an indication in the staff report.
The service road is trashed, it's trashed right there. Got a soccer game there all the time, it's, if you go past and go north from 119th, it just, it's tore up, I mean, that's all there is to it.
It's an industrial interstate highway service road.
I, I agree with that.
I agree with that.
This is, I mean...
So, when we say it is what it is, are we saying it is what it is, and it will support the use, or we're not sure, or not really, or...
Is it, is it in ideal conditions? Does it need to be repaved by the city of Oklahoma City? Absolutely. It'll get added to the 5280 miles that also probably need it. Is this an appropriate location to direct truck traffic and to prevent traffic from leaving the interstate and driving deep off of, on an arterial street to get to a facility? 100%, that's what it's for. And ironically, what's really strange about the service road is that it's two-way. Now, I don't want to cast stones here, but if you get just a little bit north of this, you get into a beautiful thoroughfare, that's recently designed, that runs along the east side of the airport, that this jumps right into. It's magnificent, multi-lane, divided median, wonderful lights. So, this area could benefit from that sort of a development, sure, but can it handle truck traffic? Absolutely, that's why all these industrial users have been over here for however long they've been here.
Do you have any sense at all about how much additional traffic it would, it would take? I mean, how many trips a day do you anticipate for this use?
We probably come in and out of there about 70 times a day, with, with all the trucking that we do. And that doesn't count all the trucking that goes down 113th Street, all the trucks that go into...
So that's now?
The Chesapeake, that's now.
What, what do you anticipate this use would generate?
I haven't, haven't a clue. I mean, our trucks, right now, go to the landfill about 30 times a day, so, you know, that's, that's on our roll-offs. Our front load go to about four times a day, that's just for us.
This is what's terrible.
But currently...
I find it a little bit difficult to imagine that you don't have some sense of how much use is going to be made of this facility when it's constructed.
Probably around 50 trucks, I mean, I don't know, I mean, how many trucks come down through there.
If you only look in general in the trash industry, most of these back loaders, side loaders are carrying probably five to eight tons of trash each. So if you look at those coming in at a 500-ton per day facility, you're going to be at max maybe 100 trucks a day, probably closer to...
Mr. Groves' brief insinuated to Commissioner Powers about 71 trucks a day, based on the projected load, so if you add 70 trips to their 70 trips, you're at 140 trips.
Well, I'm not concerned about what's going on there currently, my concern is just about what this will add. That seems to me to be what is for us to determine with respect to the special permit application.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's horrible.
Commissioner Coffey, this is your ward, ma'am, are you prepared to make a motion? Do you have other questions or concerns?
Well, I am. Just a couple of comments, first of all, express my thanks to the homeowners at Williamson Farms for your attendance and for the numerous, numerous letters and calls. I do want you to know that I read every letter carefully with serious considerations. I've enjoyed working with you in the past with the, with the gravel pit and certainly, excuse me, with the prairie dirt farms, those haven't always been happy meetings, but I think we've had happy results overall. I do want you to know that I visited the facility in Norman. I am happy to say that I experienced very little odor, noise, dust, and that facility, by the way, is not very far from tennis courts and soccer fields from the University of Oklahoma. I was rather pleasantly surprised at how little disturbance there was from that facility there in Norman. With that said, I am prepared to make the motion, I guess with some technical evaluations that we need to add. One, dealing with the fence, Commissioner Powers, do you want to word that technical evaluation for us?
Um, there is a technical evaluation that requires the fencing, so, we're talking about the exterior fence.
Perimeter fence.
This would just be TE4, and it would require perimeter fencing shall be eight feet in height.
Okay, and then is there another technical evaluation, five, as that relates to trees?
Yes, ma'am. What, what I wrote down, and you, the applicant can confirm this is correct, but what I wrote down, based on the discussion that took place, was that evergreen trees on 10-foot centers shall be planted on the south and west property lines.
Right.
Is the applicant in agreement with that language?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Evergreen trees on 10-foot centers shall be planted on the south and west property lines.
South until the point in which the building is constructed, the entirety of the west.
Okay, are we in?
Hold on.
So, so I move.
In review of the site plan, it looks like there is room to plant trees along the entire south boundary line.
So, the eight-foot fence is around the facility itself, not the entirety of the industrial tract?
Oh, the facility fence?
Correct.
Okay, so let's, so it's not the perimeter fencing, it's the facility fencing?
Yes.
Okay, so the to-be-constructed facility fencing shall be eight feet in height?
Yes.
That would be TE4?
Yes.
Yes, and five is the tree.
Would we call that an inner fence?
I would just say the to-be-constructed buildings fencing.
It's called the tran, to-be-constructed transfer.
Because my understanding is there's two sets of fencing, there's an outer fence around the whole tract, and then the inner fence.
The inner, yes, so the, the fence surrounding the transfer facility.
Which is gonna be built.
The inner fence shall be eight-foot.
Okay, so the to-be-constructed transfer facility fencing shall be eight feet in height.
Yes, sir.
Staff in agreement that that language can be enforced appropriately in building, building permit stage and so forth? Okay. So we'll make that TE4 for the record.
Right, all right. With that clarification, then, I move approval of SP550 with technical evaluations one, two, three, four, and five.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend approval to city council on SP550, subject to the technical evaluations as amended and outlined in our discussion and read into the record by Commissioner Coffey. It's been seconded by Commissioner Highsmith, please cast your votes. All votes should be cast, and that application is recommended for approval. Next item on the agenda is item 19, and if I may, because I'm expecting more discussion, I need just a minute, so if we could take five minutes, that would be wonderful. Am I opposed to that? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay, our five minutes is run, so we'll go ahead and get started again. Call the meeting back to order. Next item on our agenda today is item number 19. Commissioner Highsmith is recusing himself from this item, so he didn't forget to come back from the restroom or something. Mr. Butler?
Yes, item 19 is case SPOD 1336, application to rezone 2528 North Chertel Avenue and 722 Northwest 25th Street from Neighborhood Conservation District to SPOD 1336.
Cindy, would you be able to pull up the elevation, the rendering? So, we were before you all a month ago about this case, and we've taken a couple of continuances. During that time, we actually went back to the Historic Preservation Commission where they did recommend approval on the SPOD. Also during that time, we've had a neighborhood meeting that was fairly well-attended with the folks who had shown up. I don't know if any of them are here today, I didn't see them. In that meeting, which lasted about an hour and a half, I think we had two key takeaways. One was that they felt the density was a little too high for the subject site, and that there wasn't enough parking. So, they wanted to see parking go up and density come down. And so, a little bit unique, I think, we've submitted two site plans to staff and have revised the SPOD on Monday, also sent that to the neighbors and to Commissioner Cravens and Commissioner Powers. What that site plan shows are two different options. One, if we're able to get the on-street parking approved, which is the SPOD site plan that was in your packet, which is this, it shows on-street parking along North Chertel. There's questions about the bike lane and what that would look like. Alternatively, what we showed in the most recent revision was that the site is still functionable with the density that we're currently proposing and meeting one parking space per dwelling unit. So, by reorienting the building, we're able to pick up additional parking to appease the neighborhood. Our preferred site plan is on-street parking along Chertel. We think from an urban design standpoint, this is a much better project. So, based on that meeting and the email sent out Monday, we received one email back saying that one of the protesters no longer has any issue with the project. We've not heard from any of the other neighbors. And so, with that, there are two TEs in the staff report. TE1, we agree to. TE2 still causes us concern. I think providing that second site plan shows that our density does not need to be dictated by our on-street parking. We can provide off-street parking to meet the density that we're proposing. So, we'd ask TE2 be deleted. There are four other TEs that are all included in the SPOD that we submitted on Monday, which was dated October 22nd. I can read those into the record. What would become TE number two, we would provide one parking space per unit.
Let's call that TE3 if we can, Mark.
Okay, TE3, we would provide one parking space per unit. There would be a max of 17 units for track 1 and 2, and four units within track 3. There would be a zero-foot setback on the east property line of track 1 and 2, which is consistent with the existing historic church.
Would that be TE4?
Sorry, TE4.
And read that one more time.
There'd be a zero-foot setback on the east side of track 1 and 2.
Okay.
And then, the final TE would be that shared parking between all three tracks is permitted. That parking would not have to be on the tract of the use. Within the SPOD, we provided the standard language that the city uses to meet that.
Shared parking between tracks.
Correct. And all of those were submitted in a redline version. The date on that copy is October 22nd.
And that's a redline version of your MDS?
That's correct.
Okay, which is dated October 22nd, and you're purporting that that's the current draft with all the updates that the neighbors saw and that you've just read from?
Yes.
Okay.
So, with that, happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval.
Commissioner Powers? Your ward, ma'am.
This is an interesting case. You know, the biggest appeal of the overall application for me, I have to confess, is the possibility of not seeing that church tumble, you know, down brick by brick over the next 20 years, the way it has been over the last at least 10 or 15. And the fact that this SPOD takes giant steps in that direction buys a lot of goodwill with me. I have to say, I look at the density on this project, and it looks a little scary to me, I have to say that. But, it is to be designed, as I understand it, in a way that will, you know, drift, things like that, that will bring it more into visual scale with the neighborhood. It's not any taller than a church, I mean, that's just a fact. And I have no problem at all with the fourplex on the other piece of property. I have a preference with respect to which way the traffic, the parking works out, but since my city councilperson bicycles everywhere he goes, I feel sure that that's going to be decided at pay grades higher than mine when it comes to, you know, where it goes and how it works, and I'm okay with it. I think, you know, when we met with the neighbors, I'm curious to know, are there really no neighbors here to speak on this issue today?
Anyone here in reference to SPOD 1336? It appears not?
And if I could ask real quick, because I remember the protesters before. You said one let you know he or she no longer objected. Do you remember the name of who it was?
I can convey, I can't recall offhand, but I can convey that I reviewed an email that was sent by Mr. Zizal from the email address. I recognized the name from being a protester, and it confirmed that they were not in opposition. I do not recall the name off top of my head.
Don't remember who it was?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I feel comfortable in telling you that it was not Ms. Jones.
Yeah, no, it was not.
It was not Ms. Jones.
It was Dan Mack.
I'm astonished that there's nobody here, frankly. Our most recent meeting with the neighbors was quite, what's the right word? They were actively engaged, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of back-and-forth. But, when it all boiled down to what the main issues were, they are exactly as Mr. Zizal stated, had to do with density and had to do with parking. And in some ways, those two things get kind of fuzzy on the edges and sort of bleed over back and forth between each other. I feel like this is a really good use of this property. I feel like it will bring a level of density to the area that is appropriate, both to this particular tract and to the area overall. And, you know, I would like to see this built here, frankly.
Okay. Other comments from commissioners or questions on this?
Commissioner LaForge, to answer your question, it was Dan Mack-Lamore who sent that email.
Thank you. I would just go a step further, just because I can't take any credit for any part of the work that's been done by you or anybody else, but, you know, so often, we have this chamber full of people in opposition to, you know, historic structures being proposed to be torn down. And here, we've got an applicant who's essentially running through a brick wall to try to preserve one, and I appreciate that effort, and I appreciate the work of staff to work on this and for your work on this, Commissioner Powers. And I know, you know, there's been a lot of people involved from the staff perspective, but there's nobody here to celebrate that, unfortunately, but it's a lot of effort that went unnoticed. But, I echo her respect for the effort to try to preserve a structure and make great economic use of it today and restore some great property taxes, so, which will hopefully help to bring these schools around here up a little more. So, I commend you for that.
Thank you.
It is unfortunate that so often silence is the best you hope for on applications like this. The fact that the chambers are not full today.
Yeah, no one's celebrating it, but we should.
So, I, yeah, I think if this church ultimately is saved, that will be a really wonderful thing. And, separate and apart from that, I nonetheless believe that this is a very good use of this property. I think the density is appropriate, not just as an offset or just as a side effect of saving the church, but in and of itself.
Well, and I think just for the purpose of the record, too, I read the staff report along with Mr. Zizal's changes from 29 to 21 to bring it into conformance with the comp plan as it relates to what U-M would want to see. So, they brought it within compliance of that, which I think was great. Is that accurate?
I think we're slightly higher, but...
But, not nearly what you were, which was 58 dwelling units per acre, based on your count.
And that's correct, and we're right on the cusp of both the retail corridor and the TOD, which far exceeds what we're currently proposing.
Got it. Okay. Any other comments, or are we ready for a motion, Commissioner Powers?
I'm ready, if you are. If none of the other commissioners have comments or questions, or... I would recommend that approval of item number 19, SPOD 1336, with the addition of the two, with the elimination of TE2 and the addition of at least two, I thought maybe there were three.
There were three.
And I would have to rely on you to...
You're fine.
Recite those for me.
I'll be happy to do that. TE3, which was added, would require one parking space per dwelling unit. Is that correct, Mr. Zizal?
Correct.
TE4 would be a zero-foot setback on the east side of track 1 and 2. Is that correct, Mr. Zizal?
In between, TE4 was actually the maximum number of dwelling units, would be 17 units for track 1 and 2, and four within track 3.
Okay, so that's TE4. Say that one more time for the record.
The maximum number of dwelling units would be 17 units within track 1 and 2, and four dwelling units within track 3.
Okay. TE5, then, would be a zero-foot setback on the east side of track 1 and 2. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And TE6 would be, the parking requirements outlined should be shared requirement between tracks 1, 2, and 3. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's a little bit more language, actually, within the SPOD that was provided within the redline.
Per the language included in your October 22nd master design statement.
That's correct.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. I'll take the second on PrimeGov. It's a motion to recommend approval to city council on SPOD 1336, subject to the technical evaluations as amended and read into the record by Mr. Zizal, Commissioner Powers, and myself. It's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast, and that application is approved. And Mr. Zizal, I commend you, one other thing on your effort for the neighbors, based on the amount of people we had in here the first time to get to this, wow. So, we appreciate that effort.
Thank you.
Next item today is item 20.
This is PUD 1790, application to rezone 11,000 Northeastern Avenue from R1 Single Family to PUD 1790.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Callport Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Dr. Amy Darter, who's with us, as well as Mr. Johnson and Mr. Zizal. So, this is an application to convert the existing barn and then add the possibility of two additional buildings, perhaps, for limited to boat and RV storage. So, the PUD is really specific. This is one that we've been working at for about a year. We had, I'm going to say, three or four well-attended neighborhood meetings, and as recently as last Thursday, in fact, had another one.
Oh, my God.
So, the PUD is recommended for approval with no technical evaluations, but what has been handed out to you are TEs that I wish to include that come from specific agreements with the neighbors. We're lucky enough to have one of the neighbors here with us this afternoon to ensure, her husband's a lawyer, so to ensure that I don't pull a fast one, I believe, is what he said. So, we've gone back and forth on this quite a few times. Again, the PUD is limited to boat and RV storage, the use is necessary, but these 10 TEs, we believe to be a reasonable resolution of some of the concerns that existed with the neighbors. So, you all have a copy for purposes of just, you know, stating them. One, add section 9.16 hours of operation, and this is a PUD that's already been submitted to staff. It was submitted this week, and so, your staff report doesn't reflect it, which is why we're going to put into the record, but staff is in possession, and assuming that you recommend approval with these additional TEs, it's what the document will look like when it goes to city council. So, and the chair, do you want me to read them all? What would you prefer me to do here?
So, what I would just say, because of the number of TEs, is that we have been provided with an exhibit of additional technical evaluations, 1 through 10, which were provided to us to be incorporated into the applicant's master design statement, and a motion on these TEs to be included would be, assumption that these would be adopted into the master design statement as outlined on the handout we have. So, if we get to the point, I'm not saying we are, but if we get to a point where a motion to approve the application or recommend approval on the application is made, just make that subject to the technical evaluations provided by the applicant at today's meeting, and we will understand that this is what's being incorporated.
So, I do want to just go over a couple of those at a higher level. So, one of the things the neighbors were concerned about is the nature of the area is kind of rural, and so, we went back and forth on trees versus fence. So, what we ended up with is they wanted trees along the north and the east, and there will be trees along the west as well. What you see before you on the screen is an old exhibit. This is the new exhibit. We have a 100-foot setback from the north, a 100-foot setback from the east. Again, this reflects those trees on eight-foot centers, 22-foot centers along the west. We've limited some of the hours of operation. We've limited, again, the type of use. Everything is restricted to boat and RV storage. So, with that, we finally arrived at a point where, I'm not saying the neighbors are happy, but they're not certainly here to protest. So, we believe, again, it was recommended for approval without all of these additional TEs. We believe these additional, or these TEs will simply make it more compatible and make it more palatable. Do you happen to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Box. This is Commissioner Pennington's ward, he's not with us today. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on this item? PUD 1790. Questions from commissioners on this?
Mr. Box, are the trees detailed in TE number 7 to be evergreen trees?
We don't say that behind you.
I would just say that if we were to do canopy trees, eight-foot on center is too close, and they would choke each other out. So, you would end up with a bunch of dead trees later on. So, I would say they should be evergreen trees if we're going to go with that density.
We're fine with evergreen.
I think in terms of...
Are you fine with evergreen?
Using trees for screening in a situation like this, evergreen just makes a lot more sense.
So, we can just add the use of evergreen trees to number 7.
I have to say, I can't believe Commissioner Pennington is not here, and we should appoint him to something as a result, but...
Second.
I also, you know, want to make sure that you all have in mind that the storage facility on Western that's giving me such trouble also started off as boat and RV only, so they have a tendency to get squiggly in the middle. I think I may use, I may end up using your list of TEs to help me work out that case, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and if you look at the PUD, it says, so it's automotive and equipment, cleaning and repairs, light equipment. This use is limited to accessory washing facilities. Then, it's automotive and equipment storage, limited to indoor storage of boats and RVs. So, we specifically limit it to that, and the personal storage use, that general use is not within the list of allowed uses.
Okay.
You good?
That's me.
Okay. Just for the purposes of the record, TE number 7 on the applicant sheet that he provided to us for incorporation into his master design statement in the record for the meeting today has been revised to read as follows. "The use of trees shall satisfy screening requirements within this PUD. Evergreen trees shall be required along the northwest and east." We just want to require the evergreens on the north and east, right? Because that's where the eight-foot centers are?
That's where the eight-foot centers are. I mean, maybe we say evergreen, and you leave the variety of tree on the west. We'll figure that out. Is that fair?
Colorado spruces.
What's that?
Colorado spruce, maybe?
If we get that far in here, I'm going to resign. So, "Evergreen trees shall be required along the northwest and east. Said trees shall be required to be planted on eight-foot centers along the north and east and 22-foot centers along the west."
Yes.
Is everyone comfortable with that language? Okay, so we've amended that into the record. Okay, so if, since Commissioner Pennington is not here, if someone could make a motion, again, we just need to make a motion on the item, however you'd like to make that motion, for PUD 1790 adding the 10 technical evaluations provided by the applicant as incorporations into their master design statement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. A motion was made by Commissioner Hinkle, it was seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that application is recommended for approval to city council.
Thank you.
Next item on today's agenda is item 21, which is a comp plan amendment. Mr. Butler?
Yes, this is a consideration, well, the CPA 2021 number 12, consideration of a proposed map amendment to the conference of plan, which removes the urban future land used to topology area layer on a 160-acre tract located on the northwestern corner of Northwest 150th Street and North Sarah Road. And Benari is going to give us a brief presentation.
The request is to lift the urban future land used to topology area layer from the urban low intensity based LUTA designation. There is this associate zoning application, but PUD 1851. There is the area, the subject site, the existing condition. In terms of water, the subject site is categorized as potential connectivity zone. The applicant is proposing to extend the city water via an existing water line along North Muston Row to serve the site. The wastewater, the subject site, will be served by an existing sanitary sewer line on the southern portion of the property. In terms of fire, the northern part of the parcel is in the longer-than-rural response time. The southern part is located within the rural response time set by Plan OKC. The existing conditions in terms of land use. The predominant land use pattern in the area is on developed land, and to the west is a rural residential. In terms of zoning, it's a mix with agricultural district, and to the northwest is a residential use R1 that was approved by the council on March 30th, 2021. Summary of analysis, consideration to request to lift the urban future LUTA layer from the underlying urban low intensity based LUTA designation. One goal of the land use plan is to direct urban development into areas that are most efficient for the cities to serve. The comprehensive plan states that in order to be designated as urban low, development should be served by water, sewer, and emergency services. A decision to remove the urban future LUTA designation is based upon the availability of these three key services. This development will be fully served by water and sewer. However, the site is too far from the fire station to meet preferred emergency response times. A future fire station is contemplated for the far northwest area of the city. This station will likely provide a urban level of service at least to a portion of this site, but this precise location and timing of this future station is unknown. The findings, the applicant proposed to extend water and sewer services to the subject site. The southern part of the site is located within rural response, emergency service response time. Extension of water and sewer infrastructure will allow and require subsequent development in the area to connect to the city water and sewer system. Based on the findings above, staff recommends approval of the request to lift the urban future LUTA layer from the underlying, underlying urban low intensity based LUTA designation. Any questions?
I don't have any. Commissioners? Thank you very much. Does the applicant want to speak?
We agree.
Excellent. I do, there is someone signed up for item 22. It is Ruben Millerborg, and I hope I'm saying that correctly. Is that you, sir? I'd like to hear from you now on this item as it relates, just to understand what your concern is going to be for commissioners' benefit. We're not hearing the zoning case yet, but...
I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you were saying.
It's okay. You've signed up to speak on this item. Are you in opposition or support of the application?
I'm supportive of the zoning. What we're concerned about is we're, in the quarter section to the west of this property, is double-A agricultural. I've lived there in 49 years, and it's a rural atmosphere. We have rural roads, we don't have curb and gutters, you know, we've got...
Rural roads is kind, sir.
We've got a great neighborhood, all five-acre lots, great place to live. We're concerned, we don't want to cook our street into their addition. We don't want to make a speedway through our neighborhood. And the gentleman here that I talked to a while ago that is with the company doing it said that they didn't intend to do that. I had gone around the neighborhood, and I drew up a, I'm an attorney, I'm retired. I'll be 86 Thanksgiving if I'm still alive. I worked for the city 60 years ago as an engineer. My first job was resident engineer on the Oklahoma City baseball park, and that's long gone. So, I've been around a while. Anyway, we'll be happy if they'll, just, the only concern we have on the zoning, we wish you'd make the lots a little bit bigger. I counted the lots, and there's over 400 of them. We're in the Piedmont School District out there, and our schools are horrible. They're growing, it's a fact, they're going to be 6A next year, I think, and we just don't have enough facilities for them. You put 400 houses, two babies per house, that's 800 kids are going to go into the school system.
Yep.
And, you know, it's just not a good thing, but anyway.
We appreciate you coming down, appreciate your work for the city so few years ago, and thanks for coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. Can we make sure to get his name?
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes. Could you read your address, name and address to the record for us? Thank you.
My name is Ruben Millerborg, and I live at 11050 Greenwood Drive in the Greenwood Meadows Edition.
Thank you very much.
We have a Piedmont address, we're Oklahoma City.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner LaForge. Okay. I recommend, recommendation from staff to approve the change. I just got to make one comment because I can't help myself. So, this came to us, the case to the north came to us. We had a unanimous recommendation to deny it that went to city council. It was ultimately approved. This is precisely what I was afraid would happen, is going to happen. I, Mr. Millerborg's probably going to wait for me in the parking lot. I am not going to be able to support not including connectivity, because 150th doesn't exist. And what he called rural roads, let me tell you about Sarah Road. Sarah Road looks like a road where an artillery division has been practicing firing shells for like six years, and then they just quit, and then they opened it back up. I'm serious. That's how bad, you cannot drive that road. It's so bad, which is one of the reasons why I was vehemently opposed to us approving that residential development to the north, because that's, this is exactly what I was afraid of. It's going to keep coming, and we're, oh, I don't know, 15 to 20 years behind being able to get funding for these roads. There's just too many priorities. I mean, we just heard a case for, you know, 45 minutes that's on an off-ramp of the, one of the most major interstates in the whole state, much less the city, and the road conditions there. This is not going to get any money. But, I have to support it, because we got residential on the north, now we've opened it, but I don't really, I don't really like it. This, the growth out here, he's right, it's going to be overwhelming. It's going to be overwhelming, because Piedmont Schools are the next Deer Creek, and Deer Creek was the, you know, the next Putnam City and so forth. I mean, it just keeps, going to keep coming. But, I support the application.
I apologize...
What else am I going to do?
I apologize to everybody up here. I only just saw that one of my clients is actually the seller of the land, and I did not know this previously, out of an abundance of caution. I think I'm going to, in the midst of this case, recuse again.
Okay.
My apologies.
No problem.
Mine's worth it, go home, Ace.
Don't go home, Ace, so we got to vote on the calendar. It's very important. I'm going to expect you for the calendar vote, or you're going to join... going to expect you for the calendar vote, or you're going to join Kamal in the next committee.
All myself.
I got a chair and a vice chair, all picked out.
I have to say that while I appreciate the dilemma in which you find yourself, there is a response. You can continue to vote against those cases that you really don't believe ought to be approved. I mean, you can send that message. You may be ringing a bell and, you know, into the darkness. That's kind of a mixed metaphor there, I guess. But, you know, it's, I...this is exactly what we're all concerned about. Here at least, they're bringing water and sewer.
Yeah. No, it's served. That was the argument, you know, that they made on that tract to the north because it was served too, which, when I read it in the application, I thought it was a misprint. I really did. I thought it was an error. So, yeah. At this point, though, I think the, I've said this to many people who have come to the chamber to complain, you know, about growth in their area. This is particularly true of Commissioner Coffey's work. We've got a lot of cases. The best message I can send is to keep people phoning their city council person to complain about their road being used as an artillery deployment and getting money to fix it. That's the best message I can send. The more people I put there, the likely that that noise is going to get louder. So...
You know, the big picture argument there, though, is, and I mean, that by not funding that infrastructure development, the city is discouraging development. It doesn't work very well, as we see every other Thursday. The development keeps coming, discouraging or no. But...
It pays to be in the six fastest growing metropolitan area, the top 25.
But I think, you know, it is a difficult place, both for us in terms of the decisions we make, but more specifically, for people that are looking to this area as a place they want to go move.
Yeah.
It's like maybe not really giving as much thought as they ought to, not only to the infrastructure and the amount of time it will take for it to materialize. I mean, you know, the schools may be the least of their worries. They may not be able to drive home on the roads that exist and well into the time their kids are off to college. But for all those reasons, I mean, the infrastructure, the schools, all of those things, this continued bleeding of development out to the suburbs and beyond, you know, whatever there is beyond the suburbs, you know, into these rural areas. I mean, that's really what it is.
Yeah.
Is very problematic for a lot of different reasons, including the cost of providing services.
Commissioner Clare, you were going to say something?
I was just going to add, I'm right there with you. And, I mean, you know, you would think common sense would tell you that people that buy out here and they go look at these homes out here, and they realize that either they're going to have to buy a four-wheel vehicle to get to and from their home, or they're going to have to pay for an alignment every two or three months would deter them. But apparently, it's not. So they're going to be paying property taxes, and they might have to wait 15 years for public road improvements, but they're making that choice.
Yep.
Well, I mean, there are impact fees. I mean...
Well, I understand that.
There's a significant amount of money that will be put into that general fund to deploy on a global basis for this entire area.
I get that, but it's just, you know, the housing's going to come before those funds arrive, and certainly before construction can remedy the problem. There's been a lot of cases. Ironically, you know, so Sarah Road is the dividing line between Commissioner Clare and I's wards. East side of Sarah is Ward Eight, and where this is, is technically Ward One. The, but all through this area, when you, when you drive it, the roads are in really bad shape, and there have been numerous applications where I've had the same position on every single one of them. There was the Habitat for Humanity Development closer down to 150th, or I'm sorry, closer in on 150th at, what was that, Rockwell?
Morgan.
What was it?
It's on Morgan.
Morgan.
The Habitat's on Morgan.
Yeah, but there was one that came through that was for the reason that. It's on council. It's on, it was council on 150th is what it was. Anyway, there was that case. There was the apartment case that you and I discussed. It was in Deer Creek that we reduced the units on because it was going to bring traffic to council. So, I mean, there's just a common issue here. At this point, I think the more people that we put out here, the faster it'll get resolved because people will complain. So...
The ideal's building a neighborhood on 89th by my house, and 89th wasn't that in the right shape to begin with. Now it's totally destroyed.
Yeah.
But at the same time, they were able to put in some money. The city was able to put in some money in Cleveland County, and they're going to get the road, you know.
Yeah.
So that's a plus for that, I guess.
And on Morgan and the Habitat.
In the meantime, it's totally destroyed.
You know, enough people complain that they just totally resurfaced the entirety of Morgan.
No, I understand that's how it works. It's just unfortunate that it has to work like that.
Sure.
Right? That, because we know where the growth is occurring. It'd be, it's very utopian, but it would be great if we could get dollars ahead of that, you know, and then we don't have some of these issues. But at any rate, I digress. We could talk about this forever. Commissioner Clare, I don't have anybody else sign up to speak. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on CPA 2021 0012? Seeing nobody. If you have any other comments, sir, I'll take him, or I'll take a motion if you want to make it.
I'll move approval of item CPA 2021 0012.
I have a motion. I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It was seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. All votes should be cast. And the CPA is approved. Next item on the agenda is the companion zoning item, which is item 22.
This is PUD 1851. The associated item, application to rezone 15101 North Sarah Road from AA to PUD 1851.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive on behalf of the applicant. This is the associated PUD. There is a site plan as part of the PUD. There you go. So we do show connectivity to the north, and then obviously two on Sarah. There is an easement that surrounds it. It's a 50-foot easement. So there is a separation there between where the lots will start and our western and northern property line. There is just one technical evaluation, and I'd ask to modify that language to read as follows. At the time of the final plat, all of the 100-year storm will be contained in a common area. Trees within the 100-year storm will be retained to the greatest extent possible.
I'm sorry. Forgive me. You said this is TE1?
Yeah.
And you want a minute to say what?
At the time of the final plat, all of the 100-year storm will be contained in a common area. Trees within the 100-year storm will be retained to the greatest extent possible.
Oh, you're just amending that language?
Yes.
All right. We'll take that amended language as being read into the record to reflect an amendment request to TE1. Commissioner Clare?
Yeah. I've talked with the applicant as well, had several conversations with Mr. Millerborg, who I believe is no longer present. The neighborhood, he represented the neighborhood. They were not against the development. The only concern that they had was the connection, that there was, you know, a connection to Greenwood Drive. You know, in looking at the current site plan, that is not proposed. But we also know that that's just an exhibit, and so I want to consider adding a second TE, limiting access on the westbound reline.
I'm, I support that. 150th is not a road.
Yeah.
The only way, if you talk about a fire station, we've got, this neighborhood, as we were just told, is partially in rural response times, and we're going to have a fire station come out somewhere. Go ahead.
Oh, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I wanted to add TE, there would be no connection to Greenwood Drive.
I think there should be a connection to Greenwood Drive. I mean, I want to hear, give me your side of it, and I'll give you mine, but...
Well, I mean, we're talking five acre lots over there. As Mr. Millerborg, you know, it's night and day from a neighbor, you know, it's a rural five acre lot. No curb and gutter, bar ditches. So they don't want the connection.
I understand they don't want it. Nobody does. My concern here, and I think this will be a great discussion, and I, you know, but 150th does not exist. You cannot go from Sarah west. So if the fire station wound up being built west of this property, in order to get to it, you'd have to go to 164th and come back down, or you'd have to go further south. And I can't recall, I got an aerial here. Let me see if I can get to it real quick.
We do have a connection to the north through that neighborhood.
I understand, but the connection to the north's not going to do me any good if the fire station is built west of this, because what would, what it would allow them to do is come from Mustang Road in from the west here because they can't get down 150th. And if it's a public, Greenwood Drive, which it sounds like it is, is a public street, with that cul-de-sac and the connection is available, we have a policy on connectivity, and for good reason. This is like the clearest example I've ever seen where that's really necessary from a city services perspective, for police, for fire, for trash, for freak ice storms that occurred one year ago today. All kinds of things can be issues that, you know, and without 150th being a real street, I think I could let it slide if 150th existed. It doesn't. It's not, it's not real.
Well, it is a subrag. I mean, we'll have to, it's a matter for plotting. We couldn't vary it through the PUD anyways.
I know, but I, but I want to be clear that we're having this discussion now, and I hate that, that was, I mean, I hate that Mr. Millerborg left because I don't think he heard me either when he had walked away and was, were visiting with you guys. That, this to me is, it is an issue. I won't, I'll go so far as to say, I don't think I can support the plat unless the connection's there.
Well, I mean, here's the other thing, is if there's a connection there, and you're coming from the south, and you live in this new neighborhood, there's no way you're going up to 164th and going around. Every, each one of those 400 residents is going to go down Greenwood Drive.
To get, to get where?
To get to this neighborhood.
Coming from Mustang?
If they're, if they're coming anywhere from the south, I mean, they, I suppose they could, they could come up Sarah. But if they're coming from the west, then they're going to, they're going to come in Greenwood Drive.
Yeah, these people are primarily probably coming right Northwest Expressway, and then they're going north. You know, I can't speak to the condition of Mustang Road as much as I can Sarah.
Mr. Cravens, what if we agreed to a crash gate for fire purposes?
Well, no. I agree that this is something that ultimately we're going to have to resolve at plating and not here today.
Right.
But I, you know, I, for myself, feel free to play me this tape later, given the current existing conditions, I think it's not possible to cut off connectivity here. I just don't see it. It's very problematic, and I understand not only why the neighbors don't want it, but I mean, it's very problematic even from a planning standpoint. Those giant acreages over there right up against, you know, a real neighborhood, it's just a problem, you know, for them to have as a very likely point of access being, you know, through this acreage development over here. I get why they don't like it. I don't like it much myself, but there's no way that I could, certainly not today, express the opinion that, you know, we're going to, we're not going to have connectivity there. I don't think so.
Like I said, I recognize it's an issue for plating too. I just wanted to be upfront about it now.
Fair enough.
Because I think you need to make sure that the neighbors know this is going to be a discussion, and there are people on the commission who are not in favor of severing connectivity. So they, they're going to need to.
I understand. They'll get, of course, the plat, they send notice for the plat, so they will have notice of that.
I would push that a little further, notice of the plat. I think you need to let them know that there was active discussion about this and that it is a point of contention. Certainly not a slam dunk. Not in a position to assure them that it probably won't happen.
Mr., I shouldn't assume, but I will. Mr. Millerborg, I think, is who put the protest petition together.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so we may have, staff may have an email for Mr. Millerborg.
I have it, if they don't.
Okay. And there are also residences with addresses that were provided as a part of an exhibit that was emailed to us.
Zittsau indicated he has his email address.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comments on this, or we make a motion on the zoning unless you've got other thoughts? I got us in a rabbit hole, but...
No, so we're just going, okay, zoning, got it.
You're not against connectivity. It's the neighbors that are against connectivity, right?
We don't show connectivity. I mean, are we, do we care? We don't really care.
You don't care?
No.
They didn't show connectivity because the neighbors requested there not be connectivity. They, they just want to build houses, whether there's a connection or not a connection.
I don't, no, I'll clarify. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there was any previous communication prior to Mr. Millerborg's...
No.
Objection.
Got it.
He reached out to me, said he objected, and I hadn't even received my case file yet, application, and so I was able to get it ahead of time, and I responded back. Site plan application does not, shows that they do not intend to connect.
Got it.
And he said, well, I'm going to go ahead and prepare a petition anyway because we don't want the connection. I said, that's fine. You cover yourselves. So...
Yes, sir?
Zach Roach, 1320 North Porter. We had anticipated this in our past dealings when we, specifically when we've had this issue. This has been something that's popped up. So this was an anticipatory move on our part, recognizing this could be an issue. So the sequence of events is exactly how you laid it out. And we're agnostic on the issue, to be honest with you. I mean, we can go either way.
I figured. Yeah. Okay.
Out of curiosity, what's the dirt patch down in the bottom left corner that has the road that leads to it? What is that?
That's 150th.
On the far south side of the...
Yeah, it's the south, would be the southwest corner of the square, but there's a dirt road that leads to a, looks like an oil...
Yeah, there's an oil, there's, I think there's an oil and gas facility right there.
There is, yeah, there's, I'm looking at a map. Commissioner Hinkle, there's an oil and gas drilling site in the bottom corner.
Okay. I just couldn't tell what it was.
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready? Let's do it.
All right. I'll move approval of PUD 1851. Subject to the amended technical valuation as read into by the applicant.
That's perfect. I'll take a second on Prime Gov, which has been seconded by Commissioner Coffey. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And that application is recommended for approval. That is the conclusion of our individual items to be heard with the exception of item 27, which is our 2022 meeting calendar. And I mistakenly put that in the continuance second, second, but...
Motion for B.
I'm assuming everybody took a look at this, except for me, because I didn't see that on the agenda.
I needed clarification. We've got alternate. We've got option A and option B, and I couldn't really...
Yeah, one's got two days or two meetings where we'd had more than previously.
So the issue is, do we want to have one meeting in the summer and one meeting, or two meetings in the summer? I'll...
And also November and December.
That was an error.
Okay.
That was an...
I was concerned with that.
That was an error. So on the sheet that shows two meetings in June and two meetings in July, you would need to strike November 23rd, 2022, and December 22nd, 2022. That was an error.
That's better. I was concerned, especially for staff.
As it relates to summer, interestingly enough, Mark Zittsau signed up to be heard on this item. I know what he's going to say. I don't particularly care in this one instance, of course. I always care when you're, when you have an applicant or, you know. But I think we, I've never been in favor of this. I think we should keep the two meetings in the summer. We tend to get this massive buildup of cases. I don't know if you guys will recall, there was a 67-item agenda, and my thought is, we have an attendance policy we approved as our bylaw adoption, 75%. I missed the July meeting, admittedly, because I was traveling. If you can't make one of those meetings, it's understood. As long as we have a quorum, I think we should try to hear the cases.
So I want to add one question. It's really on behalf of staff. Make sure Jeff and JJ that works, because for us commissioners, I agree with you completely. I'm either going to do a long one, or I'm going to do two short ones, and that's fine. Weekend, I'll take a vacation. It is unfair to the applicants that have to get here at 1:00, and theirs isn't heard until 8:00. They didn't sign up for this. It's not their job. It's not what they volunteered for. But for summer travel planning, do your staffs need, what I've seen working at companies, when you've got a meeting every two weeks, it's not just showing up to the meeting like I do, it's the prep, all the way up to the days before or the day after. So if the staff felt strongly that they need their staff to be able to plan around family vacations and things, then it's tougher. If that's not the case, then absolutely I think we should do it, because it was bad for the, for the citizens that had to wait that late.
Yep.
I had never considered the staff, and I apologize to the staff. I've been fighting for this since I got here. And to me, to me, because of the reasons you stated, super important. But yeah, I think staff deserves vacations, so this screws up their holidays. I mean, I think that's...
I agree too, but my thing is, if it's on the calendar, I would assume, and I may be assuming this wrongly, that at this point, you know, if somebody's going to be traveling, they're just, they're traveling. Somebody can be in their stead.
Well, the reason I ask is if you guys have the ability to do that. But I, the reason I see it is that companies I've worked with, it's, there's certain people, you know, as soon as a meeting's over, they got to work and get ready for the next meeting. And then when that one's happening, they're always getting ready. So it's, that two weeks is like working the whole time.
Right.
Now, if you have the ability to, somebody else is going to do it, or if that's not an issue, then so be it. But if the staff really need it, then maybe that would be a reason.
Let's get some comments from both JJ and from Jeff.
I mean, it's really up to you. We've got to be here anyway, so...
Okay.
What it does, it gives us a little bit of break in between those meetings in the summer, but it's a double-edged sword. That next meeting is going to be 60-some items.
Okay. If you guys can manage around it with multiple staff... If you guys can manage around it with multiple staff, whatever, then that's fine. I just want to make sure that this hadn't historically been done for the staff, and we believed it was for us.
We were led to believe it.
Yeah.
Now, we can manage around it. We just, you know, I'm concerned about the, that resonates with me, what you said about people having to wait till, you know, 8:00 at night, and then there's always the risk that, you know, we have a meeting and something comes up in July, and then we don't have a quorum to add insult to injury, so...
Yeah. Okay.
Mark Zitzel, would you like to be heard on item 27? Where's your poster board, pal?
Five minutes, right?
No.
I think collectively, you know, on our end, we discussed it, and we also agree that two meetings during the summer would be much more beneficial on our end, so we would hope that you adopt option B.
Okay. I'll accept those comments since I agree with them. Does, yeah, exactly. Does anyone else have any strong feelings in the alternative? Is there anything else we're missing about this? I mean, I feel like this is one of those deals where we've been down this road, and we've done it before, and it didn't work. It's kind of like night council meetings, everybody thinks that's a good idea about once every 10 years.
I'll just say, it'll be interesting to see how it works out. I think, you know, typically, it is very, very difficult to get a quorum.
Yeah.
Both around summer vacation scheduling and also around the holiday, so...
And I agree, you may have a meeting where you've only got five, but you can still get through a lot of cases, oftentimes, right? Not always, but you can get through a lot of cases that would otherwise wind up on that, you know, 9:00 at night agenda, and that's all I'm trying to avoid, and that's for selfishly, for us, and also for staff, but to your point, Rusty, I mean, there were people here that, poor guy who had item 64, or whatever it was, I mean, he was here eight and a half hours. It's like, he probably gave up and went home, you know? So, anyway. Okay, well, if there's no further discussion or feels different, then I'd take a motion to adopt calendar, draft calendar option B, striking the meeting November 23rd, 2022, and December 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
I have a motion, and I'll take the second on Prime Gov. It was seconded by Commissioner Highsmith. Please cast your votes when available. All votes should be cast. And the schedule of meetings for 2022 has been received and approved. That is the last item we have, so we'll move into additional items. Communication reports, we don't think we have any committee reports, we haven't any meetings. Planning commission members, Commissioner Claire?
I think I found a committee Commissioner Highsmith could chair, and that would be a transfer station subcommittee.
I love that. Transfer station locations?
I think I'm already on a couple subcommittees.
Nominate Kamal Pennington as chair.
Sorry, I said Highsmith. I meant Mr. Pennington.
Yeah.
Kamal.
There we go.
Trash chair.
Yep.
So moved.
Commissioner Powers, motion not accepted. Commissioner Coffey, Commissioner Privet. We can't have fun, you know, I don't know where we're here. Commissioner Highsmith.
I do finally have a comment. Since we're not doing Zoom anymore, I miss Commissioner Privet's backgrounds. I expect like hats or something, because we don't have the changing backgrounds anymore.
Yeah. Random animal you can bring with you or something?
Put a parrot on my shoulder.
Okay. I spoke my piece on the Ward One case. I just would add again, that was a really good example.[1609.91]